So this is for minor subdivisions? So essentially, they would be dissatisfied with the decision to re-hear it.
I don't think so. I would think this would be a remedy that they would have to.
Well, and I know there was some concerns about runoff and erosion and the last stuff.
They really couldn't use the back part of the site.
Yep. Nope, I accept. Shut up. Dude, you just doubled my salary. I've worked for you before. Let's go.
Okay. I can revise the language to clarify that.
Well, I don't think it must be clarified unless you attempt something different. It's amazing. I love that kid. My intent was like, dude, buddy president.
All right.
So YouTube didn't push on.
Did not now.
We had a big agenda. I wanted to get these ten minutes of transit. I figured everyone was good to go with their appointments and committees.
Yeah, I didn't see any need to change or discuss. That's why I swear. I mean, I would.
Well, I put what I wanted to give. Matt may have given us that because that was open when it started. So I was like, yeah, more opportunity. I forgot to do it this year. He just showed up. Hey, how about this forum we're about to have?
I didn't think so. I can return to you.
Have we heard from Matt? Oh, he did tell me that. I'm sorry. I've been waiting for Matt and I forgot he shot me a note. I forgot Matt wasn't gonna be here. That's why I was just sitting here waiting. I was like, oh, okay. All right. My apologies for the tardiness, but at seven oh one, I will call tonight's Planning Commission meeting to order. I will actually, with the approval of the agenda, I would propose, under old business, if we could, just for Annie's record-keeping, the first two items, if we could talk about PC twenty-four seventeen and eighteen combined and as our primary first agenda item, then if we could do nineteen second and twenty-third, I think that would flow, especially allowing folks in the crowd to not have to sit here any longer than they want to. So that's kind of my request. If anybody has anything I missed, okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Perfect. All right. So we'll move on to agenda item number three, elections of officers and commission appointments. I will accept a motion from somebody, and if you would be kind enough to articulate or spell out your motion, that way posterity knows what we have, because I think last year we were really nice and said status quo, which doesn't help. You can say. Do you? I can't. I don't want to make a motion, but if somebody wants to.
But I'm just asking. Do you? Okay, so I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that all of the current officer positions and the current board and commission appointments remain as last year's, twenty twenty-four into twenty twenty-five.
Do you want us to articulate those or is that enough? Yeah, if you could. Okay, so I'm just reading off your email here. This is a friendly, but just articulates. Correct me if I'm wrong. So Corey Watt would be the chair and you would remain on HAPC, your representative. Sean would be vice chair and you would represent us on HAC. Jason would be council rep, which he already is, and also a representative to Environmental Commission. David Petherich would be just council rep and would be appointed to the, or representative on the Climate Action Steering Committee. Matt would be on the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, and Jeff would be in the Community Improvement Corporation. Does that represent status quo?
I think it does. I believe Ms. Webster is our official rep and you are our bonus rep.
Yeah, that's, it's a confusing situation, but I think as long as we.
As long as one of us is there, I think we're fine. Okay, perfect. And then.
So that was the motion second.
Yeah, my clarification. Did council, I didn't see, did you guys stay, request to stay on for this year as the council reps to planning?
Yeah, I don't think we've met since to change anything, so I don't think any things changed. No, it'd been back in November. Yeah. How was it last year?
Yeah, a long time ago. All right, perfect. So we have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, concerns, confusion? All right, voice vote. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposition? All right, seeing none, we are status quo for everything from last year. I will accept a motion to approve or updates, changes, corrections to the minutes. Dr. Petherich with the win. Does anyone want to second that? Ms. Webster with the second. All those in favor of approving the December tenth minutes? Any opposition or abstentions? All righty. With that, I will open up the floor for public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. So if you would like to talk about something that does not appear on tonight's agenda, feel free to come up to the podium, state your name and where you live, and you will be recognized for up to three minutes. And let the record show, not a single person moved, so I will assume that nobody wants to talk about things unless they're on the agenda. With that, reports from boards, commissions, committees, and staff. We're gonna start with you, Mr. Cruth.
Nothing to report.
Easy peasy.
Nothing to report. I have one small thing to report. Actually, it's not so small. It's pretty cool. The city has put out an RFP for a development for affordable housing on Hester Road. And that's really exciting, because the past cottage community slash tiny homes project just didn't work out. And that's too bad, but it's nice to see that we're moving forward on that, on getting affordable housing there.
Perfect. That's a good update.
Environmental Commission did not meet. Nothing there?
So just for the benefit of the planning commissioners, I'll report on what council's been doing. And so we just met and had a retreat today over the afternoon. I want to just kind of high level say what's really cool about what's going on with council now is that it's pretty plan-driven. So as in, you know, in the past, there were all strategic priorities, but now we're really guided by the comprehensive plan as a framework. Everything is in the language of the comprehensive plan and everything refers back to that. So some things are not in the comprehensive plan because they're everyday priorities of maintaining public safety and public services, but very much guided by the goals of the comprehensive plan. And so to the degree that there's only so much bandwidth and budget dollars, we're trying to prioritize what are the things that we can do. I would say that a lot of council's goals, which are the people's goals through the comprehensive plan, ride heavily on the comprehensive code update. You know, there's a lot we're hoping to get out of that code update. And so, but I, you know, I would also say that planning, and we talked about a lot of things, from long-range planning to code enforcement that are kind of top of mind for council. So anyway, we were talking planning today in terms of the city's priorities.
Perfect. Thank you. So historic and architectural preservation did meet, because the calendar was cruel and put that meeting out of this one. So we, the biggest things we did, actually to complement what Dr. Petherich was saying, is we met with consultants on basically where we were on the historic side and of the consulting work with zoning. And we had a robust conversation about windows. I have never talked about a window for that long in my life. We almost came close to a planning commission timeline. I think we were there two and a half hours, three hours.
Almost three.
Yeah, so for HAPC, that is torture. Not to be there, but they're not used to that long of a meeting. But no, things are moving forward. We do have a new point person with McKenna. The folks for, our original folks for McKenna were based out of Michigan and have tremendous resources and perspective, but our new point of contact is based in Columbus, so I think proximity and familiarity with, you know, Ohio rules, statutes, and she has municipal background, so I was pretty impressed. Other than that, that's all I have from HAPC. Mr. Perry?
On HAPC or just overall?
Your report.
Okay, thank you.
You can talk HAPC if you want. Two and a half more hours.
Somewhat related to that, I will add that we do have the new project manager from McKenna and Preservation Forward. Her name's Abby. And that's been updated on the website, so if you go to cityofoxford.org/oxfordtoday, there's a, it's called a social pinpoint website, but it's a way for the consultant to interact with the community and provide updates and a rough schedule for how things are going. We are running about a month and a half behind the schedule that we had hoped for. They are still planning to have a draft in front of council in October, which I still think is a pretty aggressive schedule for the breadth and depth of the development code update that's being done and preservation policy as well. There was a public meeting that was originally thought about to be in January, kind of a second public meeting. The first one was held in October. That's been bumped to February now. But there is a new report out on that website I would encourage everyone to look at. I sent out to planning and HAPC members that it's about a thirty-page report that the consultants and staff team put together describing kind of our current state of affairs and where they hope to go, and we're working closely with them. So I encourage you all to look at that and the general public as well, and it could kind of give a flavor for what the next public meeting would probably showcase as far as a framework for a major update to the zoning and subdivision code and preservation policies. So that's a step we had hoped to have completed a month or two ago, but it's at least done now, and we'll continue to provide updates either through that website or at this meeting. And but there'll be several public meetings on the overall project.
Perfect. Mr. Moore, do you have anything?
No updates to share.
I didn't know if maybe you had come specifically to give us an update. Okay, wrong agenda. Sorry about that.
No worries.
All right, so moving on, I will entertain a motion to take PC twenty twenty-four seventeen and PC twenty-four eighteen for six oh one, six oh three, six oh seven, West Chestnut off the table.
So moved.
Dr. Petherich with the motion to untable.
Second.
Vice Chair Rosenberg with the second. All those in favor? All right, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
Make a motion we adjourn to public hearing on PC twenty twenty-five seventeen eighteen?
Twenty twenty-three seventeen and eighteen.
Oh, yeah, it was a twenty twenty-four. That's right, because it was, I was guessing.
He said five, I said three. We equal out.
Okay.
All right.
Before, actually before we move to the report, I do want to disclose for PC seventeen and eighteen that I have a relationship with the project applicant, Adam Nelson from Habitat for Humanity. I discussed this with the law director. There's seemingly no conflict of interest. There's no financial transactions. This is someone who comes in and gives guest lectures, but I did want to disclose that and put that on the record.
Appreciate that. All right, so I do have a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
Second.
Second with Mr. Bracken. All those in favor? Aye. Perfect. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair Watt. Okay. So again, this is PC twenty twenty-four dash seventeen and dash eighteen. This is for preliminary subdivision and preliminary and final plan development. And the proposed name for this development is Clarence Place. This is a Habitat for Humanity request. So the developer would be Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati. The present property owner is ourselves, essentially, City of Oxford, owns the three parcels involved. The engineer is Bear Becker, care of John Bear, E.E. The site area involved, it's three point four six four acres, presently zoned R two A, single and two-family residential district. And the proposal is for a thirty-five lot subdivision that would consist of thirty-two townhomes, and the remaining three lots would be devoted to common functions, open space, alleyways, et cetera. Here's a look at the site location. So this is an overhead aerial view showing you the three parcels, and the subject property boundary is outlined with a black, thick black line. So Charleston Drive is off to the west, so you've got the condominiums that are attached along Charleston. You also have single-family lots along Maryland and Pamela to the east. And of course, this borders West Chestnut Street, which is State Route seven thirty-two. Here is a look at the current zoning makeup in the area. So Charleston Drive is zoned R three multifamily. And of course, the property itself, R two A, which is the same zoning classification that's to the south, and that extends into the Southern Knoll subdivision. You've also got R one A, single-family to the east along Maryland and Pamela, and R one B to the north, also single-family, a little bit denser than R one A, along Clover and McGuffey. And here is a look at the comprehensive plan, so the character types that are found on our future land use map. So this particular site is designated suburban neighborhood, and so this is kind of intending for this to blend in with the surrounding neighborhoods. But I will note also that Charleston Drive is identified as a transitional suburban neighborhood, and the reason for that is because it's not a single-family use, or what we think of as traditional single-family. So you could consider that in conjunction with this site in that the development character would be akin to Charleston Drive kind of blending in to this site as it interacts with the suburban neighborhoods around it. Here is a look at a bird's eye view. So this is the site boundary. So this is all three parcels, and you can see the three single-family homes that are presently located on the site. And two of those have obtained demolition permits, if I'm not mistaken. So those will be demolished fairly soon, and then, of course, the third would eventually be demolished as well to make way for this development. And I did go out and visit the site, so these are a few photos that I captured off of Chestnut Street. So this is looking east, so this is the intersection between McGuffey and Chestnut. You will notice that there's no crosswalks presently designated across Chestnut. And so that ultimately became one of staff's recommendations, was to install rapid flashing beacon at that intersection, and the applicant has agreed to do that, so that should help with the pedestrian accessibility to northern destinations, to the Tri, to Kroger, et cetera. And then the other photo is looking westward, so this would be going toward Brookville Road, Oxford Riley Road. And then toward the back of the site, so there is a creek that runs through this heavily wooded area. This is Bull Run. And it has kind of a noticeable bend at this location here, so this is capturing that. And then this is a view kind of looking northward through the yard space that's presently on the site. And there are quite a few mature trees that are kind of dispersed throughout the site. We can't save all of them, unfortunately. In order to accommodate development, a lot of those will have to go. There will be a lot of new trees that will be planted as a result of this development. And fortunately, there will be one somewhat substantial tree that will be saved as a result of this project, and I'll touch on that a little bit later. And of course, there will be trees along the southern part of the site, too, that will remain untouched because it won't be part of that main development footprint. And then here, finally, these are some photos of the western property line adjoining to the Charleston Drive condominiums. So there's presently some fencing along the property line. And my understanding from one of the HOA presidents there, Mr. Stefan Davis, he informed me that that fencing was actually put in at the request of the property owner at the time, who resided here at, I think that's six oh, six oh seven, West Chestnut? I get the numbers mixed up. It's six oh one, six oh three, and six oh seven. But whatever the address may be for this particular house, that property owner had requested.
Probably six oh seven.
Six oh seven. Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. That's the reason why that fencing exists. Presently, that only extends to about, oh, I would say right about there. This photo actually shows you that it stops, so there is some length along here that is presently unfenced. So that is another staff recommended condition, is that Habitat would complete that privacy fencing all the way down to the edge of the development. Okay, so here is a look at an overhead aerial, kind of zooming in on the site in question. And I just want to highlight very briefly, so there are FEMA flood zones present on the property that are associated with Bull Run. The one percent annual chance is what is often referred to as the one hundred-year floodplain, AKA one percent annual chance. And then the five hundred-year floodplain or zero point two percent annual chance, there's little shreds of land to kind of flank that one hundred-year, one percent annual chance flood zone. And I did reach out to ODNR. I sent them a copy of the plan. I said, hey, is this gonna take any kind of H and H analysis? H and H stands for hydraulic and hydrologic. Did I get that right?
Got it.
And because there's essentially no development actually taking place within those zones, there's no building footprints, there's no roads or anything of that nature, they felt that an H and H wouldn't be necessary, that essentially you can just incorporate the stormwater functions that are required for any city project stormwater management, so there will be a detention basin that will be installed to handle the stormwater runoff, and that will have an outflow into Bull Run Creek. But we don't anticipate that this development will have any substantial negative impact in terms of, you know, increasing that floodplain area or needing to adhere to more stringent floodplain regulations. Okay, so going through some slides that are kind of stylized, so building footprints and the kind of the grassy and the vegetated areas kind of pop out at you, so this is looking at the existing conditions. So the very first plan that we received was on October second, and this wasn't like an official submission. This was just a plan that happened to be shared with us by the developer. So this is what they were originally thinking, where they had a street that would meet perpendicularly with Chestnut, with parallel on-street parking, cul-de-sac at the end, and then three distinct alleys that would provide parking pads to the rear of the attached units. So these are the buildings that would be proposed, so not unlike Charleston Drive with the attached units. So you would have a separate front door to each unit from the exterior. There wouldn't be shared common hallways or stairwells or anything like that. It would essentially look like townhouses from the exterior. So this was the original concept, and then I will note that there's a detention basin shown. This kind of triangle-shaped region was originally where they were thinking. And then the formal submittal that we got October twenty-eighth, so you will notice in between the original concept to the formal submittal that the street configuration changes rather substantially. So that switched from on-street parking to angled parking along one side of the street. And there's also this, what I would call kind of a slight S-bend. And the reason for that is there is a utility pole, a Duke utility pole, on West Chestnut Street in this rough location here. And it would be quite costly to relocate that pole, and as I understand it, it may affect other poles as well, inflating the cost of doing a relocation such that you could meet an intersection right at a ninety-degree angle, have it be perpendicular, and so this was the solution that was envisioned at the time, was to just kind of do this slight bend as you curve around and enter the subdivision. And this is where we encountered some issues, some comments that were expressed by the city engineer, not being comfortable with the proposed street profile, and that's ultimately, that was the main impetus for why we recommended tabling from December to January, was to accommodate a street profile that was gonna meet his approval. So now here we are at the revised plan that's now proposed tonight, so this was submitted December seventeenth. So you can see that that S-bend is preserved. However, the on-street parking has returned. So that would be on both sides of the street. There'd also be this nice little bump out in the middle here, kind of like a little pinch point for pedestrians to cross. And the, there would be cluster mailbox units situated in proximity to that. That's required by USPS now. You can't have individual mailboxes anymore. You must combine them into those CBUs, as we call them. So that's where they would be located, for residents to get their mail. As you can see, the detention basin has kind of shifted northward a bit. So that actually has the added advantage of helping to preserve some of the existing vegetation in this area, so this wouldn't be as impacted in terms of grading activities as it would have been with the original. So you can see the original kind of eats into that area a little bit more than the present proposal. But otherwise, it still preserves a lot of the key features that we saw throughout all the submittals. There's a central green space in between these two particular buildings here, so this would be kind of an activity area in between those two townhouse buildings, and it also preserves the three private alleyways. So here's a summary of the unit counts per building. So you have four here, eight here, six, seven, and seven. And then again, here is the location where Habitat has agreed to install rapid flashing beacon. So this photo here, this is actually at, I believe this is, it said OBF, so this is Maple and Chestnut. I believe there's another one in Oak as well. So essentially, just picture this type of setup being installed here as well. Okay, and we did receive some sample elevations, so this gives you an impression for the townhouses that Habitat is proposing to construct, so looks like they would vary the colors in between the units to kind of create that sense of separation, even though it is one contiguous building. So here would be the view from West Chestnut, so you'd have the. So here would be the view from West Chestnut, so you'd have the front doors fronting directly upon Chestnut. And then the four-unit building, kind of a side profile from West Chestnut. And then here would be the backside view from Charleston Drive. So the folks that live on Charleston, as they would drive in here to access their garages, if they're able to see past the fencing, maybe from an upstairs window, this is what it would look like if they could see through that screening. And then here is what the view would look like from Maryland Drive on kind of the edge of the courtyard, right here. So these three houses in particular. Okay, and then here is the proposed subdivision. So again, 17 and 18. So 17 is the planned development. That's the zoning approval for the uses, for the general design that's being proposed. And then the subdivision aspect is to carve up, to divide this property. Well, first consolidate, it's three different parcels, distinct parcels presently, three single-family homes. Those three narrow kind of bowling alley lots are going to have to be consolidated together and replatted into this. So 35 lots in total, 32-unit lots, and three common lots. So the three common lots, there's one here that's like a backwards L, and then one reserved for the common courtyard. And then the biggest one would be down here and then swooping around in this private alley. So these would have to be HOA-owned and maintained. And then you will see, too, that these interior lot lines are traversing across the buildings. So there would not be any setbacks observed between units in those locations. It's a zero lotline community in that sense. So you'd have common walls and you would have ownership of the land underneath the unit, as well as that portion of the structure itself, would all be individually owned. So this is different than a kind of a conventional condominium where you own the unit, but the property is owned in common and maintained in common. In this case, it's more of a land dominium setup because you have ownership of both the land that's underneath you and the structural components. So with the proposed landscaping, I think my slides might have gotten out of order here. I apologize. There should be a slide that shows the entire subdivision. Maybe that accidentally got deleted. So, but in any case, there's landscaping that is proposed. There would be street trees along Mitchell Court. That's the name that's being proposed for the new cul-de-sac street. That would be a public street, so dedicated right-of-way, again, for the subdivision. R-O-W, right-of-way. So that would be a public street maintained by the city. I'm glad that this slide was preserved because this is an important point that I want to hit on. So I already hit on the fencing that needed extended along the shared boundary between Charleston Drive and this site. But then in terms of the boundary that is shared between the development and the Maryland Drive lots, it seems to be that there's some missing vegetation in this area. They do have some evergreen plantings planned kind of at the edge of the alleys, where the alley's dead end, which is great. We like that that's included. But I do feel that there needs to be a little bit more emphasis on this area. So there is a recommended condition that would require screening, additional screening, whether it's fencing, vegetation, or some kind of combination of the two, to help screen that courtyard from those single-family homes. And then just briefly, I'll touch on the tree survey aspect. So Chapter 1148 is what we refer to as our tree ordinance. We do have a requirement specified in that ordinance that a tree survey be performed for any multifamily residential or commercial development. So highlighting the exemption areas, you can see that in large part, all the areas that are to be developed are exempt. So there's really not a need to have a tree survey done. It would just be an added expense. And if I had the landscaping slide in full, I could show you all the new plantings that would be planted down after the existing vegetation within these exemption areas would be taken out to make way for the development, so. And then here is a look at the existing tree that would be preserved. This is a maple. And here is that utility pole, the dreaded utility pole, that doesn't, we don't want to have to remove because it would be costly to do so. So as a result of maintaining that utility pole and incorporating that S-bend in the roadway, this allows for this tree to be preserved as well. So in conclusion, our recommendation is approval of the proposed preliminary subdivision and preliminary and final combined plan development, subject to 13 stipulations as listed in your staff report. This includes seven conditions and six code waivers. So I will touch on each of those. So condition number one would be a written approval of garbage collection by the city service department. This is a pretty standard operation that we engage in for really any building permit. Whenever there's going to be garbage collection, especially shared collection like dumpster enclosures and so forth, we always try to get sign-off by the city's environmental specialists on that to ensure that RUMKY will be able to service it. I understand that the applicant has also reached out to RUMKY themselves to obtain comments. And the general comments back were that they were in agreement that they could service this, that there would be individual dumpster, or not dumpsters, individual wheeler totes per unit, and those would be situated in the alleys for collection. So condition number one allows for that to be sealed up. Number two would be that rapid flashing beacon that I've already mentioned. Number three would just be to ensure that their sanitary sewer connection, that's ultimately going to be subject to service department approval. There were some concerns with the initial routing of the sewer main connection, which will actually be to the south. So there will have to be some interference in that creek area in order to connect to the existing sewer main to gravity feed into that. There were some concerns expressed by the service department on those construction drawings that the slope of that connection was a little bit too steep. So I'm confident that there'll eventually be a solution worked out, and that can just be something that happens administratively between service department and the developer. So condition number three is just kind of a reminder for that aspect that that will need to get sorted out. Number four is to extend the privacy fencing along Charleston Drive. Number five is the additional screening that I mentioned on the eastern line adjoining to the courtyard. Number six is kind of becoming a standard boilerplate condition. This would just be to ensure that any HOA documentation that is prepared for recording, that that be first approved by the law director. Number seven, this was actually a service department request as well. They were concerned about the parking that was in such close proximity to the detention. So let me go back here to, this would be good here. So you see the edge right here, this is where there would be individual parking spaces, kind of a miniature parking lot. And you can see just how close that is to what would be a steep grade into that detention basin. So the city engineer was concerned for that, wanted to make sure that there would be something to deter vehicles from entering that basin. So what we are asking for would be curbing and a three-rail fence installed between Alley B and the detention basin. And then on to the waivers. So our subdivision code requires up to a minimum of two entrances into any subdivision. So this is a relatively small subdivision of only 32 units. And plus, we do happen to have the private alley that would loop around to the west, as you might remember. That's going to be a one-way alley, by the way. So you'll only be able to exit onto Chestnut. There will be a do-not-enter sign, vehicles should not be pulling in from Chestnut in that location. But that does allow for the emergency exit, I shall say. Emergency vehicles will be able to loop around in that manner in order to exit the site. So we feel that the public purposes are effectively fulfilled without meeting the literal requirement of the codes. We feel a waiver is suitable in this situation. Number nine, so this is referencing a section of our code. It's frequently referenced. We want to make sure that front doors are situated upon the street, so the orientation of those is not somewhere that's hidden. So this just references that section and says essentially, we are okay with this with respect to the units that would be mainly those on the courtyard. Because all of these are going to have direct orientation on Mitchell Court, and these units here will have direct orientation on Chestnut. So when it comes to the units that are fronting onto the common courtyard, because there's this view shed from Mitchell as you're looking down, plus the alleyway access in the rear, we feel that's sufficient in meeting the spirit of that requirement. So we're recommending a waiver for that. And number 10 and number 11 have to do with setbacks. So with the planned development chapter of the zoning code, it expressly states that you can vary from the usual zoning requirements. So these would be the zoning requirements that would normally pertain to R2A district development. But it does say with front yard setbacks that you have to adhere to the district minimum. So in order to have front yard setbacks as proposed, which would be at five feet from the front lot lines, you would have to expressly grant a waiver in order to allow for that. So this is a recommended waiver to reduce from 30 to 5. And then also, there is a requirement normally imposed for a 25-foot perimeter setback around the planned development. And this is one that we quite often waive. I think we waived it for the cottage community when it came forward. So this would be reducing that perimeter setback from 25 feet to 11 feet. And this is mainly with respect to the units that are backing up to Maryland Drive. Because I believe the units that are on this side here are probably meeting that setback just fine. It's mainly with these, these three buildings here as they come into contact with that property line. The less, the least amount of distance that I was able to observe just measuring on the plan was 11 feet. So you would have to grant a waiver for that to reduce from 25 to 11. Number 12 is the tree survey exemption that I already mentioned. And then number 13, so we normally require two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit. That's our code requirement. And if you tally up all the parking for the development, that includes the individual spaces off the alleys, the extra parking that's there right beside the basin, and the on-street parking, you arrive at 57 in total. And usually, on-street parking doesn't count toward off-street parking. But in this case, I think it's generally acceptable that we could count it. So in that sense, we are asking for a reduction from 64 as the minimum down to 57. So seven spaces short in total. And I believe Habitat was able to do a little bit of their own internal research to determine what the actual demand has been for developments of this general character. And they do, they feel confident that this is plenty of parking to serve the need. So that would be the last waiver. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Does anybody have any questions before I ask my Dr. Perth Roach? So my first question is, and I may have missed this, and I know there's nuances. You said that two demolition permits were already approved?
Yes, that's my understanding.
I know there's fine print and details, but I always thought that, yeah, we didn't allow demolition without an approved plan in place. So you can't just demolish something.
That would be specific to the Uptown Historic District.
Oh, okay.
But elsewhere in town, you can demolish houses on lots without zoning issue.
I just wanted clarification on that one. Couple logistical questions I have, and I was trying to find in the proposal. Sorry, it's a hefty one. And I tried to find the police chief and maybe even service directors on the, it'd be waiver number eight, the one entrance and the one-way. Has there been a specific determination on the direction of the alley? Because I, in my assumption and living near Chestnut, would think that having two points of exit would be worse than two points of entrance. So it would, to me, it would make more sense to let the residents go in their alley and then come out the street. Otherwise, passersby, everybody has two points to watch for exiting vehicles. And now, within a very close proximity, you have people who can turn right or left. So.
Let's revisit the slide so we can consider that.
Also, an inbound alley controls the danger of an outbound speeder or somebody unplaced who slides out into traffic.
Yeah, that's actually a really good insight. I do see the logic behind it. And I mean, if there's no objection from fire or service in terms of the direction, or any objection from the applicant in terms of the anticipated direction, I think, if I recall correctly in our correspondence, my correspondence with the project engineer was kind of like, hey, is this going to be a one-direction alley? And if so, is it going to be going northward to Chestnut? And the answer was yes to that. So I don't know if there was necessarily like a back-and-forth like discussion up to this point of like the pros and cons of like which direction it should be. So, but I think that's a really good point.
Okay. And also, and I mean, this is more Mr. Hatta or Chief Jones, but I also would love to see, and I know it's an alley, but we don't define things in this town. I would like to see a posted speed because like of 10 or something to indicate that it is not an auxiliary road, that that is intended. Because again, you can't, you can't tell somebody who's driving there, oh, this is only for these 15 people to go down. So like a real delineation that this is an alley, it's not intended to be a secondary street for that area.
Sometimes that might be accomplished by having a sign that says this is private property.
Sure. Well, it also depends which direction we're going to.
Yes.
And then the last, this is more of a question because you know my fondness for zero lots. What would comparable properties be in town? Because on your original slide, when you showed Charleston Drive, that's common property, or at least the slide gave me the impression, it's common property, and then the people own the units because the property lines stop.
Yeah, so that is actually more of a traditional condominium complex. Because there aren't individual lots with land, you don't have like a front yard and a backyard. You have the unit and then the space around it is owned in common.
So in town, the only ones I can think of are near David, but those would probably be just more traditional duplexes. Do we have something with this land dominium? I know we talk about it, but I was trying to think of properties that exist with that.
I'm thinking of like the units on North Ridge. I don't think those are set up as land dominiums. We did have a proposal for like South Forest Edge, Section 1.
I remember that.
For 36 land dominiums. It hasn't been built, but we have seen it.
I remember, that's the only one I could think of.
I think Applewood.
Okay.
Off of Brown Road, I think that has those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Behind Kramer.
Well, okay, yes and no. So there's some common characteristics. So like with the Applewood, the building itself, they're like individual owners. I know because I've seen this, I've explored it on the GIS. So there can be different owners per building, but I believe the units are still rentals, if I'm not mistaken. And then there's still like an overall parcel for the association. So that's different than like land dominiums where you have yards to the front and to the rear.
And it did say that the law director had to approve the HOA, which is very common. In a land dominium, is the HOA more like South Farm where Bob's responsible for his lawn and Sue's responsible for her lawn, or?
Yeah, if I could return to the subdivision slide, perfect. So my understanding is that each of these individual 32-unit lots are going to be private responsibility unless there's some wider agreement with the HOA where they come and they mow the grass or they shovel the snow or whatever. But then these common lots here are not going to be an individual owner responsibility. It would be in common.
Okay, okay.
So those are definite. And then the right-of-way is definite for the city to maintain. So the city would be plowing this street of snow and maintaining it.
Okay. And then the last question I have is on the, no, actually, if you could go back to that slide, sorry, on Chestnut. The setbacks that were allowing interior on the property or the proposed from 30 to 5-foot, there's still.
Mainly for these here.
Okay, so it's interior.
These here and these here are actually deeper.
Yeah.
But not to worry because with the planned development, you are locking. But not to worry because with the planned development, you are locking in this layout. So we would check to ensure at the building permit stage that these buildings are actually going to be situated where they say they're going to be situated.
And, and they're, they're further back from Chestnut because the four unit, that's actually a side setback. Whereas the, what's that, six unit, it's a front setback.
Right, yeah. This is technically a, actually, I would consider this a front. So, so, so under the definition of the zoning code, this lot technically has two front yards. It has a yard off of Mitchell Court, the future Mitchell Court, as well as Chestnut. So there's, there's two. It's like an L shape. So there'd be no rear yard for that lot. It would just be two fronts, two sides.
Okay. I think that's all the crazy questions I have.
I did have one question. It could be for you or the applicant.
You had your chance.
It does, it's not marked here, but I presume front, like sidewalks to the front doors. I mean, they showed the five-foot sidewalk and they showed the path for the parking, but is there? Just presuming that there's a paved pathway to the front doors.
That's my presumption, but if you wanted to verify that, thank you. I think that'd be good to ask.
Perfect. Anyone else? Ms. Webster?
This might be better for the applicant, but I'll ask you because you're standing there. I'm just a little confused, surprised that the, the long, the, the units along Mitchell Court are eight and four, groups of eight and four, which don't align with anything on the other side. Is, is there a reason for that? You know, for example, there's like this gap between the two bars that.
Four unit and the eight unit?
Yeah, the eight and the four. Like it could be six and six.
You're talking about this gap right here?
Yeah. And like, why couldn't you make some relationships from one side of the street to the other in regard to the common lot, right? Like the gap could be where the common lot is so that everyone could sort of be welcomed into it. But there must be some reason that it was done this way.
I might leave that to the desire to answer.
And then in, I guess it's not insurmountable, but in terms of deliveries like FedEx, basically the van has to park on the Mitchell Court Drive and walk the packages to the guys up to the east, correct?
Yeah, so going off of the, the elevations, it looks like each unit would have its own porch. So.
You can't.
My guess is that, you know, and, and it could vary depending on the delivery driver and what they choose to do. But I would hope that they would just, if they're going to deliver a package, that they would be setting it next to the front door.
Right, but like the, the vehicle cannot, for a majority of, well, for some of these units, the vehicle cannot get in front of the building because there's no street there, right?
So it would be especially the case for the two-seven unit buildings.
Yeah, exactly.
There might be some distance to walk. They would have to walk through the courtyard to reach the front door.
I don't really care, but you know, it's just, it's an interesting.
Funny enough, that distance is comparable to one of the three, any of the three houses from Chestnut. So the current three houses, if somebody was dropping something off for Amazon and parked on Chestnut, it's roughly the same distance as they have to walk to the seventh unit. They can borrow my pedometer.
Thank you.
They could catch them. All right. Well, I think we're done picking on you, Mr. Moore. So at this time, I will gladly accept or entertain the folks from Habitat if you would like to come up. We'll give you the opportunity to share anything you have. And then if, if it's nothing that you've covered, I'm sure we'll have some questions.
Sounds great. I'll keep it brief. My name's Joe Hansbauer and the CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati. We're certainly super excited to see this project kind of take, take the next steps and, and can't, can't wait to get started. Quickly, I will say one, I guess, point of note here is, so we build in three states, nine counties, about 150 municipalities. I will say I really enjoy the Oxford process. It is, I think, very thorough as well as timely and well-communicated. So I, I bang my head much harder in many other places. So I appreciate that. Couple of quick comments that I will make on some of the conditions. I don't think we are in opposition to any of them. So the, the car stop to make sure that cars aren't driving into the, the retention pond, it seems like a great idea. The privacy fence on the one side and, and some, some additional bushes on the other also are great. We were certainly excited to see a crosswalk in the flashing red. We think will be a great addition actually to Chestnut Street in general. So I will pause there and, and entertain any, any questions that there are.
So my question was on the front walk. I'm presuming, it's not shown as concrete walkways, but are front, front walkways from the sidewalk to the front door?
Will it be concrete?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And this was just another practical question. Thinking about these is kind of interesting because unlike pure condominium, there is some private space. And, and unlike probably, I'm assuming the demographics of this could have a lot of young families. So I don't know if you've designed, I'm just trying to think about the, the playing. You know, because I think people will, kids will want to play and there's this common area kind of in the front door. But then there's driveway plus backyard. Have you built similar? And how do you imagine the, the child play in the neighborhood? Where do you see that going?
Yeah, I, I, well, I think two things. One, I do think the common green space, right? You know, is, it's not playset, but, but certainly we expect that people, in particular kids, will be gathering there to play ball, throw a frisbee, you know, sit in the grass, eat some food, right? I also suspect that the alleyways behind will be places that you will see kids on bikes and scooters and wield things and, and kind of gathering. They're intended to be low-traffic, low-throughput, low speeds. And that will, I think, also be a place in which kids will, will gather to, to do things.
Okay. I think that's all the questions that I had. Well, here is just, and I guess it's just to ask a question of kind of openness. Because I think the flow pattern's kind of important to think about. Because, because I, 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 I think, so I guess my, my question is, are you open to, to a little bit of traffic calming on the main street, for example, with the pedestrian? Because I can see people impatient to get around to their thing, like zoom up the street in order to come up the alley. And I, I do think because of the tightness of the neighborhood, there may be an amount of play in the street. You know, I think people will be using the street. And so I'm just wondering on a local street like this, whether, for example, you know, raised crosswalk, you have one crosswalk there, whether you, you don't need to think about it right now when you put it on the spot, but that could be a way of kind of ensuring through design that the street is low-speed and that if people are playing in the street, it's, you know, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, for sure. I mean, it is right-of-way, right? So, you know, I think certainly.
Yeah, the engineer would have to look at that. We don't have a lot of traffic calming in the city, but.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think there was a conversation around that. And as we kind of shifted from the angled parking to the parallel parking, but also that pinch point, I think ultimately was, is designed, right? The width of the street is appropriate, but then when you start stacking cars, parallel parking, you have pinch point for crossings. I think it will present itself as a place that naturally you feel like you should not be going very fast. You know, now, but I, I personally would welcome, you know, additional conversation there. I think we want certainly this neighborhood and community to be safe from a car speed perspective, for sure.
Okay.
It's a heavy focus for us.
All right, that's the questions for now. Ms. Webster?
Yeah, if you could, I don't know if you understood what I was trying to say, but I was just curious to know how you arrived at the eight and the four units division on Mitchell Court as opposed to sort of aligning the, the bars to meet in some way the, the circulation on the other side of the street?
Yeah, so I, like where is the gap, basically? Yeah, I mean, so we have, we have product that is four unit, seven unit, and eight unit. And so that, that's, I don't think that there was a lot more science that went into it. Like, so for us on that side, in order to get the, you know, the maximum number of units, which I think was, was a goal for us in, in the city here, to get to that 32, the question really for that particular side was either going to be four and eight or eight and four. And I think having a little bit smaller unit on the front edge, the entrance point felt right to us rather than a, a larger mass.
So totally understood. I just, I think it, you know, an opportunity that's sort of missed and, you know, I don't know how you could do it, is to just sort of extend that, that shared space in some way to the other side of the street at that location. Sort of creating a, a complete zone of recreational space. You understand what I'm trying to say? That the common lot kind of bleeds through to the other side of the street. It could be nice, so. Just a thought.
So I, I don't agree or disagree. I, I think you have a great observation. Can you, I don't know if he's controlling that.
And I'm just, it's just a comment, okay?
If you could put the map back up, thank you. The, if there was an adjustment and the extension of the primary common lot, I would also encourage, I know there's a fence there, but maybe some taller greenery. Because if there's a common area, I would imagine that there's going to be some level of pedestrian lighting and things of that nature. But at, at this point, it also kind of, oh, caps off that common lot. So I, I agree with Ms. Webster, you know, if, if the city and, well, actually, we're voting to plat it. We're potentially voting to plat it this way. So.
Would you do four, four and four, eight, two, sixes?
There is a six unit facing Chestnut, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, we have six, seven, seven, four, and eight, or, yeah, eight.
Also though, I mean, it's not a common area. It's just an opening between the two buildings, right? It is actually private.
But, but I have to imagine it will effectively become a cut-through. You know, I'm just imagining that if kids are playing behind those units and they want to join, like you're going to look for a permeate, you know? And, 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 and so to me, like I guess the question is, will it just function that way and the kids will trespass between the two buildings? Or do you just build a sidewalk to be, between? You know, I just, I'm just trying to imagine how this will actually function. Anyway, that's just an observation.
It's actually a really good observation because I'm just, as weird as it sounds, I'm thinking of campgrounds. And, you know, something that is, my campsite very regularly becomes a cut-through.
Yeah.
So I, I completely agree with you on that.
You just have a block, a blocks worth of buildings and I think you have an opening between the two masses of the buildings and I think people will use it or be very tempted to want to not have to go all the way around to the end. I don't know whether it messes, whether it's possible, you know, your, your development's pretty tight. And, and I wouldn't want to introduce a sidewalk. I mean, a sidewalk has cost, but also I don't want to mess up the plating of the thing.
So I, I actually have a question on the, the four-plex. The part that's facing Chestnut, if I remember the elevation, and I was trying to find it, that is their front door. So to Dr. Perthridge's point, the pinch point between four and eight, there should be a sidewalk.
Probably from both sides, right?
Because it is the front entrance for the, the north-facing eight and the south-facing four. Is there a different drawing, Mr. Moore, that you can think of? I, I know it sounds nitpicky, but Dr. Perthridge and Ms. Webster bring up some really, really good points.
We can control it. We can control it.
Okay. There, I think there is on the.
If you hold on just a second, we'll.
The door's pinched towards each other, yeah.
Right. Remember a slide that would help?
I think that's a fair condition.
That's the rear view there.
So, yeah, that's the side view, which one could assume if that's a view from Chestnut, that's also the reciprocal views of the pinch point and then the one down towards Bull Run as well. So their front door actually faces north-south, north-south. So to Dr. Perthridge's point, there's going to be, or should be, some.
There'll be a sidewalk from the door to the front sidewalk.
Yeah, and, yeah.
And there'll be a sidewalk from the parking pad to the rear entrance.
Yeah, I'm just imagining that it's, it's, you know, it's, and that sidewalk, the question is, is it?
A cross or a T?
Yeah, I mean, I think it will naturally be a cut-through, you know? So I don't need to come around to the front of the building. And if you already have a sidewalk there, then will become a question of, would you have two separate front walks? Or do you just have one sidewalk? Yeah, and, and that would be a full, the, the question is, then it's the matter of the, the plating of it. You know, like I don't want to mess up the, the subdivision of the lots. Because the sidewalk shouldn't be on someone's property, but should be an easement.
Which.
So actually, the original concept had a, a cut-through.
Okay.
So I wonder if it might be possible.
Sure.
Engineering and design-wise to return to something like that, respecting the.
Put with the eight and four.
Yeah, can, can you go to the new one?
Sure. Here we go.
So I just realized on the seven, seven, six, the east-facing along the Maryland Drive properties, I would, I would imagine that off of the common area, there's a sub-sidewalk that kind of L's up. Where do the ones for Chestnut, the Chestnut-facing, do those come off Chestnut? And if so, then the one tucks around the side? If that makes sense.
Here would be the view from Chestnut, so, yeah, I would think that the, the front walks would just extend straight out onto the Chestnut sidewalk.
To that staircase that's there.
Because, because none of the drawings are elevations, and I mean, this is just, this is unique. They don't show the exact sidewalk. So for example, proposed 4188, their front door is facing a fence as well as 4189, 4202. So, and, and the only sidewalk I see actually comes off the alley. I mean, that's a property lot. We have a lot of drawings to look through. I'm sorry.
The sidewalks, I guess, would have to be reflected when.
It could just be that there's another sidewalk on the side of the building that hits, you know, that's paralleled all the other entrances sidewalks.
Just so you have some context of why some of us are, are super interested in sidewalks. On Lynn Street, we have, one of my technical terms of Swiss cheese. So every other property has a sidewalk. And so if you want to take a kid on a stroller, you get to go into the street and back onto the sidewalk and so on and so forth. So those are the kind of things that we try to make sure we measure twice and cut once.
Sure. I guess we're coming back to the idea of, that there had been initially the, a sidewalk that cut through between the alley and the street and it was platted around it. You know, if, if it's reintroduced, it will require some rearrangement of the, of the lot lines. Do you have a sense of that, that there's enough wiggle room there to do that without messing up your numbers? And, you know, and where there is flexibility in this process, and I would certainly be willing to sacrifice a little bit of front yard setback in order to carve out, you know, enough right-of-way for a five-foot sidewalk. Do we have a sense of that the map would work out for?
That'd be a question for John Bear, probably.
Okay, all right.
But from a procedural standpoint.
Mr. Bear, would you like to join us?
Now, what were you going to say, Sam?
I think, you know, if, after listening to all the comments, there's enough comfort level for everyone that this could be done between planning and council. I think there's, there's a, there's a sense of urgency from a schedule standpoint, so.
Yes.
Well, and, and to Dr. Perthridge's point, you know, if a sidewalk is there, the easements and right-of-way, I mean, it could be a solution of moving the eight-plex 15 feet south if, if topography and things of that nature and lock coverage and all that good stuff. So I mean, I think there are solutions.
Yeah, and that, that do not require a tabling or anything. It just, we're, we are doing everything long one slug, preliminary and final subdivision and PUD. But, so I think we have to anticipate that there may be tweaks between this stage and council.
As long as they're minor. Yeah. So, Mr. Bear, are 53 questions in one?
Yes, I'm gonna, just two pieces on the sidewalk. So.
So we did have a lot of discussion internally with our group and Habitat's group about this side and the the walkway between the units between that earlier plan and this one. And the one thing we came back to on our ultimate decision was is while we understand that the rear alleyways are going to be used by everyone, you know, kids on scooters and such. We thought by adding the sidewalk, it would promote people to go through there to that rear alley space. So by leaving it without the walkway, it at least doesn't invite to someone walking down the sidewalk like, oh, this leads to somewhere else that I can take a sidewalk to. The rear alley space is sort of seen as, you know, the space behind your house, although it's not your property, is sort of alley space. You know, when your kid is playing, if you will, you sort of expect them to be in alley space behind your house. But if it's a sidewalk coming to there, it's sort of an invitation to anyone on that public street sidewalk to use it. So not necessarily that's the right answer. That's just the last thought we said, all right, this is what we're going to make our decision on. We flip flopped in and out.
Would you be willing to go back? Because the reason the reason I I agree with Dr. Perthrich on this is Columbia University Dwight Eisenhower. Where do we put the sidewalks? Where are they walking? So I don't think it's a if you build it, they will come. I think it's it's universal design, ADA. If they're going to go there, they're going to go there. But I also envision, you know, if they park in the rear and, you know, I mean, we've all had this. You know, that that key broke in the lock and they have to walk around. I just, I I would rather have it there and then you know, the occasional annoyances there versus, you know, somebody slipping on trying to traverse over where they were going to go regardless of what we put there.
And and also, so there's no fighting between who's using your property, the one they walk through. It's delineated and we know this is the public right of way and this is your land, this is your land.
This is my land and your land. I would be willing to to move the building if you're if you're able to put that whatever is required, staffs, that's their expertise and and yours.
Yep. So two notes kind of on the design, you know, spacing part of it. I don't know, Zach, if you could pull up maybe the old plan or whoever's, I guess.
Yes.
There's like five of you with control, none of us.
I've got the slide pulled up on my laptop, but there you go.
Could you flip to the original one that showed the lock for?
The original concept?
There you go. So if you look at the top right corner before it flips back to a terrible video of me speaking instead of the planner. The top right building in this is an eight, I believe, an eight unit or seven maybe. And when the wiggle was introduced in the street, one unit was lost from that building. So I think we picked up one unit on the left hand side, I believe, by shortening that geometry there and getting rid of the sidewalk. We used up that space. That unit that moved from the right side of the wiggle into that. And now, from a design standpoint, a couple of pieces are sort of forcing us to keep that spacing tight. At the south end, obviously, is Bull Run there. So the topography south of that alley falls off pretty steep steeply. So I don't know that we can move that alley any further south to widen that gap.
This has parking off the alley. If you toggle to the next one, there's no parking off the alley. So.
Yep, and this is.
And the greenery actually goes further north on the second slide. So.
Yep, this was our formal submittal that we made. The concept plan previously didn't contemplate the sort of engineering design of the grading plan south of there. So this incorporates our constructor drawings level of design.
Okay.
Another piece that came from that is in that gap between those two buildings, we see likely Duke and communication equipment in that alley because they need to be between buildings. So on plan, it looks like that would be like an open space there, but you'd likely have a transformer and communication pedestal sitting behind the sidewalk at that spot. Again, not the end of the world. The sidewalk would just have to, you know, go around it left side or right side. Just the, again, design implications that we went through to ultimately get this decision.
Well, a lot of times those go to the edge of a property line and seeing as these are so tight, I think it'll be tighter to the building. Is I know you and I are pro sidewalk on this. You sound.
Well, we also, I guess, just out of the set, let's, if we can just do, because I know some people from the public here, if we can do their questions first. Like, and we're already kind of into deliberation now a little bit. We keep it to questions and then hear from the public and then we can lump all the stuff together.
Well, the reason I wanted to see kind of the appetite is I also didn't want us to ask a lot of questions for naught or leave a lot of.
No, I'm all for you. Yeah, that's I'm with you.
Do you have any other questions? All right, is there anything we missed that you could think of that we threw out that?
The only other item was on the direction of the alley.
Okay.
Um, we did debate which way would be more appropriate for the design. And the one thing, again, the detail we came back to was typically vehicles pause for the longest for a left hand turn. Like, if you're traveling along Chestnut, someone turns left in front of you, that's more of a delay. So our thought was if that's an exit only, if someone's waiting to turn left, they're waiting with the sidewalk closest to them so they could see pedestrians close to them. And they're waiting inside the alley or inside that off street versus if there's two lefts in, it's two locations where someone could be waiting to turn left into both of those entrances. So that's sort of what drove us to say that's a do not enter and an exit only. Again, pros and cons of both situations, but that was the the thought process we went through is if if we were going to cause congestion or someone waiting, if they're waiting in the alley, in theory, they're blocking people in the alley behind them, which is okay versus if they're waiting on Chestnut, they're affecting other parts of Chestnut. There's a lot of factors that go into what would be the best decision. That's just the one that we ultimately landed on.
Given my experience pulling out in Chestnut, I actually think your entrance is is better than exit there. Just throwing that out.
I know even turning on or off of Aaron, which is a full blown street. That's tough, you know, so, yeah, I think.
Let's chew on it because, yeah, I think that's.
None of these things are restricted for me.
Yeah.
And can I, and I just one other question. This is more just to put something in your mind and you will come back to it. Is that we currently have really kind of low connectivity between Chestnut Street and the Southern Knoll subdivision to the south. Like, you have to go all the way around. And so that's just a historical thing, but it turns out that there's a I can't remember the name of the street. In Southern Knolls, there's a dead stub that points to the north, almost directly south of your property. That that although there is a parcel in between, is one of the most likely places, if ever a connection were to be made. I'm not projecting proposing at all that we anticipate a vehicular connection, but I can imagine a pedestrian connection would be really nice between Chestnut and this subdivision. And so I guess what I'm just saying is thinking about that 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 might you be willing to leave a an easement that might be associated with the sewer easement? A public easement for the future. It might be in ten years, it might be twenty years, it might be never. But if ever there's an appetite to build a pedestrian bridge across the creek to enable people to access, I just, I would like to have an easement there at this stage and and not. So basically, what I'm imagining is basically due south from from the bulb of the cul-de-sac. Pointing an easement in the most likely direction towards that thing. It's, I I don't think it would cost you anything in space. It doesn't affect the design. It's just literally recording the easement now. So if if we just, if there's a desire to create a pedestrian connection, there's no need to do a taking or anything like that. So think about it. You don't need to answer right now, but that's just the thought.
And to Dr. Perthrich's point, I would imagine paralleling it with the sewer line would also, you know, you're you're going to want the most logical path for the sewer. So that would also be bike friendly. So I I think it's a great observation. So, all right, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Can I add one, just one comment?
I'm sorry, are you a member of the public? That's next on it? Yes, Mr. Bear.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that the basin is supposed to be dry. So it's not a, it's a detention, not a retention. So if anyone was wondering.
I was wondering why.
There'll be questions about that. All right.
Fair point. All right, at this time, I will entertain comments from members of the public on this item. I will let the two of you figure out who goes first. Please remember that this is solely about this agenda item. This is public comment, not public conversation. So members of the commission and staff, unless directed, will not respond. And you have three minutes. So if you'd state your name and where you live.
Jim Clausen, address sixty four oh five Contreras Road. I do like to say Habitat for Humanity, I think they're the best organization ever, but I have real problems with this site. Let me go down real quick. Density is too high. This was a three single family homes and a proposed is multi-family disguised as allowable variance of two family zoning. This is not within the parameters of the definition of a P U D. A P U D is not supposed to exceed one hundred and ten percent of the permitted density, which was originally single family. We question the calculation of open space, which looks to include the retention pond, ravines and creek that is not visible to the residences or similar to the adjacent single family homes on three sides or attached single family structure, which also includes garages for secure and hidden parking and refuse containers similar to single family homes. The proposed thirty two units allow more than one hundred and twenty residents for which waivers are being asked for, connectivity, entrances, parking, lighting and setbacks. I also have environmental concerns. Connecting to the sewer requires disruption to the creek, creek bed and existing ravines around Bull Run Creek. That should be, at the very least, require approval of the Corps of Engineers. Significant erosion will occur affecting many neighboring properties, not just this property. Many of these concerns were brought up in public comment during the zoning change. The stormwater will be controlled with a detention basin that will run off from the top of the ravine into Bull Run, creating even more erosion. A one hundred foot of natural buffers is required along the side of the creek bed, which does not look to be have been met. Has there been a phase one or phase two completed to identify other environmental concerns, especially when there are known septic systems? Next, safety. Accessing these properties through dead ends and alleys pose fire safety concerns, especially at this density. Allowing a large retention area with severe drop off, straight down, especially in high densely likely with multiple children is a safety concern. Rescue at this area would also put our safety personnel at risk. Last thing on my list, setting precedent. The city waiving many requirements, including setbacks, density, parking, lighting, connectivity, entrances, tree study, green space, refuse concerns, water and wastewater concerns and safety concerns. From the initial approval of change of zoning with significant opposition from the public to the multiple waivers granted outside of the normal P U D, the city is setting a precedence to be expected when a private developer submits for approval for on other developments. As a developer in this town, which I am, I can tell you that we had to fight for every waiver or variance we have ever received. If you recall, it took us three years to get Stewart Square approved, which now provides a lot of city tax revenue.
You have ten seconds, sir.
Is that three minutes? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. If you could state your name and where you live.
I am Lori Libby. I live at nine fourteen Maryland Drive. My husband and my adult son are the fourth house down on Maryland Drive. My concern about that eastern perimeter and that property border is why can't we have a fence much like the Charleston side? Currently, there's a kind of a mishmash of privacy fences, natural trees, vegetation along those adjoining borders, which are kind of unsightly for these tenants. There's also utilities that run up through there. So please, please consider that. Another comment is that that Bull Run Creek and that detention basin or retention pond is a great curiosity for little kids. I I raised a kid on this drive and he was not allowed to go down to Bull Run Creek because there is a great drop off. And in fact, that dead end, it says no outlet. But some maps on Oxford show that cutting through, I think, to that curb cut that you're talking about, Dave. So to line those up would be very expensive, but a pedestrian bridge would be would be nice for all of us. I do have a kind of concern about the the twelve along that western edge. This is just my opinion that the two sixes look better than the four and the eight. That allow more kids to run through. I think that was my my list of con comments was trying to clean up the border on that, I guess, eastern side, the backyards of Maryland Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else? Mr. Kropenbaker, how are you?
Well, thank you. Seth Kropenbaker, economic development specialist, city of Oxford. Yeah, just one wanted to kind of express pleasure, support, excitement for partnership with Habitat. Can trust that they're going to ensure a great product is going to be constructed here. Other mechanisms are going to help preserve the nature of not only this community, but as it blends into the surrounding communities through things like the HOA. Also excited for what this development kind of represents in achieving many goals as stated through council, through the Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan on helping secure affordability for our community. I think this represents investment, skin in the game, if you will, by the city. And how we can turn that into meaningful growth, targeted growth and and helping shape the community as we want it to be. This project will help support folks who are active in our community, living and working in our community, maybe renting now. Will allow them to build equity through homeownership, property ownership. And we have seen growth throughout our community in things like Owls Landing. Wouldn't call that exactly affordable, but we see the high demand. So this is, this is going to help pick many boxes for here, for us here in Oxford. And and just kind of a quick statement, I think there are times when people hear income qualified and some folks want to recoil from that, from that, you know, that concept. In Butler County in twenty twenty four, in twenty twenty four, area median income was a hundred and four thousand dollars. So the idea that these properties would be income qualified at eighty percent, you know, in twenty twenty five, probably edging closer to ninety thousand dollars for a family of four, that's a lot of folks who live and work in our community. And this will be a great project to help support those folks as they live here. So thanks for your consideration on this and the great comments from folks who visited and staffed.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, I will accept a motion to close public session and adjourn.
So moved.
All right, motion to adjourn from public session. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned from public hearing. I'm going to start with this side of the table because I neglect Vice Chair Rosenberg. That's why she sits over here is because I I always turn that way.
I don't feel neglected, but thank you.
So do you guys want to kick off the discussion? Questions, comments, concerns?
I just would like to echo some of what Seth just said, that I believe that, you know, we need more affordable housing in this town. And this location is incredible for people who can find that home ownership and also be right near parks, right near our groceries, right near schools. So I love it that there's people that can look at these plans and see things like like alleys going the wrong way. But definitely as far as like what the community as a whole has said as far as like our plan, our our strategic direction, this is a good project. Agreed.
I I would say it aligns well with the the visions of the the comprehensive plan and I think very much supports it. It's a great location. It's walkable. You you'll have more year round residents in this site. It's a great location. It's walkable. You'll have more year-round residents in this site. I think it's a great, great development from a lot of those perspectives. I think to the, to kind of the question of the context and kind of changing some of the density. I mean, I think if you look, you know, just to the west, I think that there's, you know, those are very comparable. So this is this kind of feathered-in density that we kind of always talk about in this, these kinds of sessions. So I think that that still acts as a good neighbor and still, you know, will introduce a lot of residents to homeownership in this, in the site.
Yeah, agreed. Not only does this fit in with the comprehensive plan, but our biggest goals for the city, period, just in general, what we're trying to focus on, this does it. I'm so excited about it. Every time I read it, I get a giant smile on my face. The, in terms of what we were talking about before, I, nothing that we've talked about to me is, other than what's been written in by staff recommendations, but stuff in terms of sidewalk between buildings, in terms of alley being an entrance instead of an exit, none of that is prohibitive to me, but they are preferences that I have that I think would work out better.
Yeah, I mean, I really want to, I'm, I'm super happy about the way the process has worked. I mean, in terms of the city taking initiative to, to support development like this, you know, and the engagement with the public. We looked at something that was going to be of a different scale and a greater density. And I think there were some of us who were willing to go that way, but we heard from the neighborhood about, you know, wanting to have something that was more contextual to the neighborhood. And so I think this is really very similar in scale and character to what's around it. And, but also I think at the density that's kind of efficient. I mean, I, I, I take Mr. Claussen's point. I think hopefully things have changed a lot since we started doing stuff like Stewart Square. But I feel like one of the more successful developments that I'd love to see a lot more of is Veriker Farms, which is pretty dense, you know, that Mr. Claussen, that was yours, Jim, right? You know, Veriker Farms? I mean, I know you, waiting lists to get in those places, you know? So I think this model is of a similar context. And I don't know how many waivers were required to get that through. But I, I feel like the waivers, the, so A, I'm glad the way it's worked in the dialogue with the neighbors. B, the dialogue between the developer and the engineer and staff, you know? I mean, if, if we have stuff to talk about, it's only some of the finer points because the thoroughness with which our planning staff are, are going through this, but also not beating their heads against a developer who doesn't get it. I mean, it's a really high, I feel like it's really high-quality design and, and I hope that the conversation just maybe improved, burnishes some of the finer points. So to me, I'm, I'm all for it. And it was only through the conversation that certain things become apparent, you know? I think that one of the things that I see as a, as an improvement would be that sidewalk connection, which I think is, I kind of think it's a no-brainer, given the, the, you know, the sidewalk connection to the, access to the front doors alone and, and the reality that people will be circulating back and forth. And so as long as it can be replatted in a way that provides that five feet of, of right-of-way, I don't think it's an unreasonable, and if, and if boundaries need to be adjusted in the administrative process, I, I'd like to think five feet can be found. So yeah, that was the one thing for me. I do like to try to think ahead. And so thinking about the easement, securing that easement now, so in the hopes in the future, we can establish better connectivity to, I don't know, who owns that? Who owns?
This is the original developer.
Okay, so it's, you know, no development potential there, but it is a valuable kind of sensitive natural area that could be provided asset. I mean, so I'm just trying to think of some of the things we hit on. The, the massing of the buildings, I mean, I, I think if this were just at the preliminary stage, I would, I would really love to see a different massing of those buildings on the west side. I'm not sure I want it badly enough to, 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 to go through the, to the exercise. I mean, I personally imagine that the two buildings could be flipped. I mean, I don't have a a priori opposition to seven buildings and four, that then would align the walkway with the common area. But I don't, I don't feel like I want it badly enough to, to have to go back to the drawing board with it. I, I did, we didn't ask the question. I do think of the fencing. I think that there, I mean, we want the neighbors to feel comfortable about this and there's definitely a commitment to fencing on the western boundary. And I'm just not sure where we are with the eastern boundary and whether that's a reasonable expectation. I, I don't feel like the safety issues, there's a retention basin, so it doesn't, I don't feel like the safety issues are like, as if it were a detention basin. But I, you know, I guess it was just a matter of how much burden we want to place on the developer to screen from the neighbors. So I'm just trying to think if there were other things that we were kind of hitting. Yeah, the, the directionality on the alleys is a, I'm not sure what the right answer is there. I do, oh, I, I do think that if it were to be, I mean, I would, I'm going to want to make a recommendation that, that traffic calming, and I believe in, in, in the, in the realm of a raised crosswalk. Is it Mitchell? Is that the name of the street? You know, for that pedestrian crosswalk, I think, I, I can kind of see people, again, if, if it were, if you, if you felt like you had to go around your building, I can see people wanting to speed up the street in order to get to the alley. And so I think the traffic calming, I know our, our service department may not love it, but we are going to have speed pumps in Oxford in the future and we just need to figure out how to like them. So this could be little test fees. But that's kind of, for me, those are like really fine. Those are like details that can be worked out between here and council is my impression.
So I personally think speed pumps are stupid. Because all they do is wreck lower socioeconomic cars that probably already have stellar suspension. But just reliving my youth. So I actually have, I agree, you hit a lot of the points that, that I was going to hit. In condition number two, one thing that caught my attention was on the RRFB is, it says unless determined otherwise by the city service department due to feasibility or considerations, there are no indicators from the red light at seven thirty-two, the T, by where the bike path crosses, what is that out there, Brookville, Fairfield? They change his names.
Brookville.
Yeah, there's nothing stopping anybody, whether pedestrian light stop sign, from that all the way to the light at Locust. So I would, and again, I'm not an engineer, don't even play one on TV, but I would like that, I, I don't like unless determined because I can't think of a reason it would be not feasible. But I think it's critical because there's absolutely no break in that entire swing of chestnut. Whereas if you go over towards campus, there's three of them. So I don't know, I feel like line item veto, but yes, Mr. Berry.
If I could respond to just that one thing.
Yeah.
Since it's State Route seven thirty-two, that leaves a, a potential open door. If it's not possible, then we, you know, we basically will try and, and Habitat's willing to do it.
Okay.
But.
We don't have to go back and revise the condition.
Right, we wouldn't have to go back and revise the condition or come back and ask for a revision of some kind if that's in there. So it gives us a little bit of an out if, for whatever reason, we can't get it approved through the proper channels.
And, and just to make Dr. Perthridge happy, you can put speed pumps on state and federal routes.
As long as they're inside of a city, probably, right?
We should drive down Colerain sometime. It's a real fun one now. I would like to, I can't, I can make a motion, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I would encourage or like to see an eighth condition to Dr. Perthridge's point, traffic calming at the pinch point and potentially in alleys. I will defer, obviously, to the engineer and staff. You guys and the developers have great ideas. And again, I'm not a big fan of the raised sidewalks. I think we learned that lesson at Bishop Square. They actually had to mitigate those because the ones they put in were a little aggressive. But even to Dr. Perthridge's point, changing from asphalt to bricks, so that if somebody does go over a little too fast, it at least catches their attention. We have those throughout the city. And I think, again, it doesn't solve the problem, but I think he's got a great point at that pinch point. You know, having something that mitigates that. So traffic calming at the pinch point. And then, again, different grade or, or, you know, I like my posted speed limit in the alley, not that it's any, you know, thing enforceable. And then I would, I would encourage a ninth condition of the easement Dr. Perthridge talked about to the southern Knolls and as much as Bearbacker and Habitat and city staff and engineers can work out for that sidewalk. Because I know there's at least three of us who are super giddy about that sidewalk and two of them have council votes, so I'd just like that, that as a condition.
Are you talking easement to the south or sidewalk between buildings?
Both.
So I'm hammering out some language here, so I'll, I'll make some motions if you just give me a second.
Also, one thing I will say about the four-eight split that, you know, the gentleman had a really good point is we don't want to encourage people to cut through. So the offset really isn't a straight shot off the common area, hey, I'm going to cut there, go this way, do that. There is, that offset does at least the perceived deterrent of you're going to walk right into a building, then have to turn, then go. I mean, it's not as big of a shortcut, but for the person who, you know, maybe he's on crutches and has to get around the building or, you know, wants to cut through, you know, that option and opportunity are there. I've killed enough time, I think.
So, so here's what I have so far, and, and I'd like to see if I missed something on the alley. But one was, this is the sidewalk connection, which would be condition number eight. A sidewalk connection and related pedestrian easement shall be provided between Mitchell Court and Alley C. Is that clear enough? I don't feel like I need to say anything about the replating because the replating would have to happen anyway. Nine, traffic calming. For example, a raised crosswalk shall be provided at the mid-block crossing on Mitchell Court. Does that clear about where that is? There's only one mid-block crossing, that's, okay.
And it is public, it is right-of-way, so that'll still need, kind of like the flashing beacon, the city engineer still has to acknowledge that.
Yeah, so he'll have to review that. Hopefully, we're going to have to get around our, our hesitancy about traffic calming in Oxford. Ten was, and I don't know whether to call it a right-of-way or a public easement, shall be provided from Mitch, from the Mitchell Court cul-de-sac or bulb or whatever room to the southern property boundary to support future possible multimodal connectivity to the social, southern Knolls subdivision streets.
Access easement would be fine.
Access easement.
Yeah.
Okay. And I, I write this up and I can send this, you can have the.
And.
And what, what?
We're trying to find the street name for you.
It, it's not labeled.
It doesn't have one.
It doesn't have one. Yeah.
The unnamed street.
The unnamed street.
By Melissa Drive.
Yeah.
Well, actually, we can give you a dress adjacent to six fourteen Melissa.
We can, we can ask the developer to make it wide enough so that it can be adjusted in twenty-five years from now.
Okay, yeah.
Just having it there, again, how, where, I mean.
Kind of pointed in the direction. I think you'll have to think about the sewer because there's a sewer easement that's going in a somewhat different direction, but maybe you can. And do we, and then, then the last thing was the set of things, what's that one?
The fence.
Oh, yes.
I've got just a statement I want to make about that.
Yes.
I feel like as Community Development Director, I need to say this because we're going to have this a lot in twenty twenty-five. This, this idea of changes in our neighborhoods. And while I don't live in the neighborhood, I have friends that live there. I understand there's a certain sense of privacy. And that's fine if, if it ends up being a fence. But as we have changes in neighborhoods to accommodate different housing needs, the idea of shutting people out because it's new, it's different. I want to make sure that we're doing it for the right reasons, not so that we're embracing change and new people in a neighborhood. But we're still maintaining our, our own privacy and confidentiality from enjoyment of our own property. So I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Oh, absolutely.
But as we talk about rezoning the entire city later this year to accommodate changing needs, these conversations are going to be coming up. So maybe it's a fence with gates, you know, that kind of mentality, so.
Well, actually, my suggestion, and Dr. Perthridge can wordsmith this, was actually that the Habitat folks, the city, and, you know, the impacted neighbors, because I don't want to assume that, because we have the same friends on Marilyn. I just think of it with Owl's Landing. The folks who bought the house on Autumn Drive, there was a farm behind it when they bought it. So they look out and they see a farm. Now all of a sudden, they see a neighborhood. So I want, I want the kind of happy medium because I, I don't want to box people in and be like, ha, ha, here's two six-foot fences on either side. Because again, if I was a property owner on Marilyn, six arbbs might just do the trick. But they're going from having a backyard with three very spacious properties to all of a sudden density. So yes, I agree, you're, you're hitting it on the head, is I don't want to box anybody in and, and have a gated community, but also at the same time, I, I think the neighbors on both sides, even in the rezoning where people talked a lot about things that were above and beyond zoning, I, I want to make sure that, you know, if somebody is able to look out and, you know, hey, it's a quasi-forest all of a sudden. Okay, well, the arbbs will grow eventually, you know? I, I just think there's a good middle ground, so.
No, I was, thank you for those comments. I really appreciate that, Sam. But also, I didn't want to presume that all the neighbors wanted a fence there.
I wouldn't want a fence.
Exactly. I know a lot of people who would prefer foliage, trees, whatever.
So here's a.
So I'd rather, instead of just assuming that everybody wants a fence, that we just say, let's work with the neighbors.
How, well, here, you know, here's language, which is vegetative or other privacy screening should be enhanced on the eastern boundary of the property. And, and that can be a bit of a conversation about whether that's vegetation or a fence. Sometimes that means, we've done this in the past where the tree planting and the vegetative plant, we just move some trees around, you know, from one place to another to enhance. And yeah, I, I do, I think both of those points are true. We don't know everybody necessarily wants a fence and be, I don't think we're going to be able to, need to put up, want to put up a fence every time we have two different uses of each other. But I respect, I want this to be a project the neighbors feel good about. And so if, if some additional property screening is.
And a good green screen is just as good, if not better than a fence.
All those things at once, yeah.
So does that, so.
You could incorporate changes along those lines into condition five.
Okay.
Which deals with the eastern.
Okay.
It was written to just be specific about the courtyard area, but you could broaden that.
Okay.
Okay. I was thinking four because it talked about a fence, but I think, yeah, but five.
Yeah, I think number four was about the, the fence along the line adjoining to Charleston Drive.
Yeah.
So four would be west and five would be east.
So okay, I'm just scanning here and getting portion of it.
Also, it would be nice to note, none of this is so restrictive that it'll be highly problematic if we could ask the engineers back up. Is that okay?
So I guess.
I beckoned you, John.
So why don't we on, on five, just change the language to just replace at the eastern end of the courtyard situated between just plantings and the go along the eastern property line? I mean, I.
Yes, the eastern property line of the site.
Of the site, period.
Is everyone okay if, if Bearbacker comes? Because we're always good for expos facto questions.
Do you have any questions before I respond?
Before you pontificate?
Yes.
I don't think so.
So I think at a high level, we're on board and understanding the conditions that are being discussed. Certainly want to review them in detail now between now and council, but it sounds like there's opportunity to do that. The only one that's, the biggest concern to me is that sidewalk between on the west side. Geometrically, I'm worried about the space needed. I know five feet doesn't sound like a lot, but with the topography to the south and fitting everything in there, that's my biggest concern at the moment. I haven't studied it in detail on this newest layout to know how impactful it'll be, but I'm worried that that could be a problem.
So you're going to have to have a sidewalk to the front door of both of those properties that face each. So you're going to have like two four-foot sidewalks adjacent to each other anyway? I mean, I'm wondering whether this is a right-of-way. I mean, a right-of-way can be superimposed on top of a property boundary, right? Would it be possible?
Easement, sounds like an easement to me.
Yeah.
Access easement between two property owners.
Is it possible to have an easement for the sidewalk? Again, I think you're going to have to have either two separate front walks or one five-foot sidewalk and with, without having to replant it and just have an easement over the sidewalk that just.
Right now, is it two separate sidewalks, two basically L sidewalks? Because I thought it was one sidewalk that teed. And so I just figured continuing that sidewalk.
Similarly to the other sidewalks on the site, we haven't necessarily shown that level of detail of the sidewalk connection to the street. Typically, that would come at the building permit, like plot plan kind of phase. So we haven't shown those.
That's why they're not on the drawing. That's why they're not on the drawing.
Right. From a high level, in my mind, it would be two separate walks, again, because you're gonna have that Duke Energy and Comcast and whatever equipment that's on the ground there, it would make sense to split them. Otherwise, you're gonna end up with sort of an L shape that comes from one porch to the other and around that equipment.
Well, how wide would a front walk need to be? I mean, it has to be a three-feet-wide or something anyway, right? So then you've got six feet of
So right now, there's about twelve feet between the two buildings, and that's from the edge of the porch.
Okay.
So if you're, if you're standing on your porch with your shoulder against the edge of the porch, there's twelve feet from you to your neighbor's porch, and your sidewalk would go straight out from you to the main sidewalk. So there'd be, if you had a four-foot walk, you'd have about twelve feet between your sidewalk and the neighbor's, and in that twelve-foot zone in the middle, you'd have transformer, just like a five-by-five box.
Oh, I see what you're saying. They're, they're flush into the porch.
Correct. They don't go out. The step comes toward the public street.
It's a side, it's a side.
If you look at that front facade, you're seeing the stairs coming at you.
Okay. All right, I see what you're saying.
It doesn't go out and then down.
But, yeah, I mean, I think that, I, it's, it's gonna be difficult to engineer this, but I think at the high level, there needs to be pedestrian connectivity between the alley and the court.
So a bridge.
Yeah, and, and how that needs to be routed. Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say
It's not a deal breaker for me, but I just, I, I can imagine, you know, especially with, with kids or people unfamiliar to the property, and, and, you know, as a homeowner, I mean, you know, think of, you know, I have thirty feet to the sidewalk and someone's out there with their dog, and I'm like, you know, so I just, I want to make sure that people feel welcome and, and at home. So it's not a deal breaker for me. Quick question, Mr. Perry, if we put the condition in, and, I mean, obviously, we have two reps on council, if it's just, you know, moving heaven and earth, it could, okay.
Pursue, if, yeah, we can pursue it, or if you want to reword it, you can. I will also say that we are looking for additional funding for infrastructure for this project. I actually haven't talked to Habitat a whole lot about that, but
Surprise.
But it's, it's very costly. And so if it's possible that the city can secure additional funding, there might be a possibility to gain another unit on where the six-unit building is, to make that street connection more perpendicular, which would then free up more flexibility on that west side. But that's kind of a, that's kind of a domino
Would that involve moving the Duke pole?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But that
Can you promise they won't put one of the Soviet-era steel poles in and place?
Uh, no, I cannot promise that.
Okay.
But it's, the chances are pretty low. So, but I'm just saying that if that, if though, if that would open up that possibility, then there could be a little bit more room, you know, to move things around a little bit. But if you keep it, the wording of it such that, you know, we pursue that connectivity between buildings, then it gives us the, the possibility to work together, you know, if the utilities and, and everything can all fit.
Housing another family in need? I absolutely love that. Would it restart the process, though, and we be slowed down?
No. If we word it, no.
Great.
And you can build that into if you want to, you know, if an additional unit is
He's typing away.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Between Mr. Moore and Dr. Pritherich.
So this is what I have so far, and I can email this to you, but just, so five would be modified to read, condition five, the landscaping plan shall be revised to provide additional screening methods and/or nevergreen plantings along the eastern property boundary. You know, and so that's, that's the first modification. Then there would be a new eight that I've just reworded as pedestrian slash sidewalk connectivity shall be provided between Mitchell Court and Alley A. And that states the goal, and then you can work out the, does that?
Yeah, that sounds okay.
Should, should, shall? I would like that a little bit better, just in case.
Should, should, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's, again, I mean, it's, anything can be modified between now and, if you can't do it.
Between now and
If you can't do it, then, you know, we can strike this at council.
I, I would, I, I agree with Mr. Perry. I would feel comfortable with should, because I, again, there's five council members beyond you, and if someone is must, may, shall, they
I want to give John a chance to, to analyze it.
Yeah.
Sometimes the time between now and council can be
So that's the, the goal. And then nine is, is traffic calming, dot, dot, I don't know where the two, for an example, a raised crosswalk shall be provided at the mid-block crossing on Mitchell Court. I mean, I just, that's my
Raised sidewalk or different, a, a different
Material.
Material. Because, I mean, there are some materials that are flush that
So let's just call, just call traffic calming, and you can leave it to the experts, but, but, I mean, traffic, I'll just call traffic calming shall be provided at the mid-block crossing. And then ten, public access easement shall be provided from Mitchell Court cul-de-sac to the southern boundary to support possible future multi, multimodal connectivity to the Southern Knoll subdivision parentheses unnamed street stuff.
I think it's fair to say, we've addressed concepts that we think are important, and we're trusting the people on the ground to do their best to implement them.
And to be honest, that, that we can do all this with the preliminary, had a final PU, DNA subdivision and moving along is testament to how much the, the dots have, the i's have already been dotted and the t's have already been crossed. Like, we would be having a much different conversation that would necessitate more stages, and so this is pretty, you know, this is little stuff.
It's not a phased development.
Yeah.
If it was a phased development, I think you would, there would be
Oh, yeah.
There would be more, there would be more, a more spread-out process.
Yeah.
But since there's not gonna be a whole lot unknown, it's designed
You might have a lot more question, questions if it was phased, because you know me in phased development. So, all right.
So I'm gonna just email that to you guys, so that you have the language, but, you know, you get this point.
Do you have what you, Mr. Moore, and do you have what you need to articulate our craziness?
That, we have, we have four different recording devices.
It's the fifth one that normally catches them. All right, so before I entertain a motion, I do, because there are, I almost said conditional use.
Wow.
There are fourteen design criteria, so just to make sure that these are addressed, they're on page thirteen and fourteen, and partially on fifteen of the packet. I, I, we don't have to go one by one, but I just want to make sure that everyone agrees with the staff analysis, that things are appropriately not applicable, compliant, not relevant for decision standards and criteria, one through fourteen, and then there are supplemental, additional final plan decisions, one, two, and three. So they are in the record, I'm, I'm not gonna read them, or other, I'll just refer to them, but
You could make a motion to adopt staff recommendations.
Yeah, fair point. Look at, look at you.
So here's, I, I guess
Making our lives simpler.
Well, how, how about I say that I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the staff recommendations subject to the following modifications, because we haven't voted on the amendments yet, have we?
No, you could, you could make a motion with, to approve with amendments.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a two-for-one. I'm, I'm moving that we, we accept the staff recommendations subject to the, the following amendments of, of the recommendations, of which I've just read.
So it'd be a motion to approve accepting the staff recommendations with the additional conditions.
With additional
Yeah.
Okay.
And for the record, the vote will be on PC 2024-17 and PC 2024-18.
Okay.
One and, one and the same. Unless somebody makes a motion to separate them. So you would have to make a motion to
I would suggest that you do the main motion on staff and staff recommendation, and go one by one over the other conditional motions, just to be clear.
We have those four recording devices.
Well, it, it doesn't take that, so first, I'll make a motion, we accept staff recommendations, period. And that's what you're saying first?
Okay. So I have a motion for Dr. Pritherich.
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. We're gonna roll this.
All right. Mr. Crueth?
Yes.
Ms. Webster?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Pritherich?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Okay, so now I'm going to make a motion that the staff recommendations, which we've accepted, be amended to include the following, which I read before, but I'll just run through them again. Five, amending five about the landscape plan shall be revised to provide additional screening, you know. A new eight, pedestrian slash sidewalk connectivity shall be provided between Mitchell Court and Alley C. Nine, traffic calming shall be provided at the mid-block, mid-block crossing on Mitchell Court. And then ten, public access easement shall be provided from the Mitchell Court cul-de-sac to the southern boundary to support possible future multimodal connectivity to the Southern Knoll subdivision parentheses unnamed street stuff.
Adjacent to six fourteen.
So that's my motion, okay, yeah.
All right, so I have a motion for Dr. Pritherich and a second from Mr. Bracken.
Okay.
We'll roll.
Mr. Crueth?
Yes.
Ms. Webster?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Pritherich?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Okay, just email those to you guys.
Okay. So, and, and just for clarification, the motions addressed both PC 2024-17 and PC 2024-18.
Yes.
We adjudicated those together. Lovely. All right, I think we got through that one. Um, next, we will be doing PC 2024-19, zoning text amendment to facilitate a site review plan, I'm sorry, a site plan review process for alley lots that don't have frontage on a public street. I will accept the motion to adjourn to public here.
So
Dr. Pritherich with the motion, Vice Chair Rosenberg with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, seeing no objections. Mr., it says Mr. Perry on here, but are you, are you leaving? Are you going
He's gonna present.
Oh, okay. Mr. Moore, you have the floor. Well, it says Mr. Perry, so sorry.
Okay. So this was a matter that was tabled from the December tenth meeting last month. We did receive quite robust feedback from the group, thank you very much. So I'm just going to revisit what I was able to glean as far as some of the, the key questions raised, some of the key feedback, and how that's been since addressed in the proposed language addressing minor subdivisions and alley development. So beginning with minor subdivisions, there was a question raised by Councilor Pritherich in particular, posing the question of, is an alley the same as a street, and is there some kind of a preemption within the ORC of treating an alley the same as a street, as a street, or treating them separately from one another? So I did actually do a search on ORC 711, and there was, the word "street" was mentioned forty-eight times, and the word "alley" was mentioned eight times. And every time the word "alley" was mentioned, it was always in the same sentence as the word "street." So kind of distinguishing the two from one another is what I took away from that. But then kind of taking a step back from that, I realized that when it, when the ORC uses the phrase "existing public street," it's only talking about situations that may qualify for review as a minor subdivision, not whether or not they can truly be approved, yes or no. And there's also further language in the RC that says any division, any minor subdivision, has to meet applicable planning rules, subdividing, zoning, health, sanitary or access management. So zoning emphasis is added there. So within zoning, of course, it's well-established that zoning can control lot characteristics, including minimum lot size, width, and frontage. So what we are proposing in this latest package is to, within the zoning code, not the subdivision code, but going to the zoning definition of frontage, to redefine regulatory frontage to exclude alleys. So walking through that concept here on the next slide, we would redefine frontage as the width of a lot or parcel, abutting the public right-of-way of a street or road excluding alleys as measured at the front property line. So presently, the definition just says, frontage is measured along a right-of-way line. And so that could include an alley, it could be a street, it could be a road, et cetera. Most zoning districts already provide for frontage standards, and those were added into the code in 2021. Prior to that, we had no frontage standards of any kind. We had width, and we had size. Most zoning codes provide for frontage, so it's rather unusual to not have a frontage standard. But then, there's the question of the UP Uptown zoning district, and of course, there's plenty of buildings and uses along those particular alley, alleys, you know, think about Mc'N'Joes and such. And it's been clear from the get-go with this process that when it comes to amending the language in our minor subdivision section and our LA development section, that we want to exclude the Uptown District entirely from this extra set of restrictions. So to make sure that we're not creating an inconsistency, inconsistency here between the newly revised definition in the zoning and the alley development section and the minor subdivision section, we would make an amendment to the UP Uptown zoning district standards to eliminate a frontage requirement altogether. So that means there's no need to even observe the definition of frontage as excluding an alley particular to the UP Uptown-zoned area. And I will also note here, too, that our future unified development code, kind of the conversations that we've been having early on with the, with the consultant, they are recommending that we take a regulating plan approach to the mile square, where we're actually doing kind of like a miniature thoroughfare plan, where we would designate particular alleys different from one another, so we could designate certain alleys as becoming more akin to what I would call B-streets separated from the A-streets, the primary streets. So we could take a thoughtful, kind of careful, deliberate approach to particular blocks, where we might want to see some densification and more proliferation of alley development sites, rather than just opening it up entirely to, you know, citywide. We feel like that deserves more conversation and should be incorporated into that unified development code without prematurely kind of opening up the, the gates, if you will, for those potential subdivisions to be considered. With this package of amendments, it was always kind of intended to treat those particular sites that were pre-existing, where there's already a vested right. We, if we're gonna create rights, new rights to new properties, we need to do that in a very thoughtful, careful manner. And there's certainly a case to be made in terms of, like, there's probably alleys with, within town that can definitely become more urbanized, could be improved to be these kind of quasi-alley-street type environments, where you've got shared modes of transportation. So I don't think this effort precludes that from happening, I just think it's, it's a little too early to be entertaining that. So that's kind of where I landed on things. You have that second bullet point basically says what I just said off the cuff here. So taking a careful incremental approach in the future, designating certain blocks or certain corridors for that added level of density. Further feedback, so allowing the planning commission to serve as that safety valve in peculiar situations rather than BZA, following a process akin to minor amendments. So the way the language is revised now for minor subdivisions, the zoning administrator had the first stab at applying the criteria, and as Mr. Watt well knows, now we've seen actually a flurry of different minor subdivision requests, and they were all very straightforward requests. It, it, we feel like a lot of these, especially when they're straightforward, we don't need to kind of bog down the process and engage the chair. But there certainly are situations where we may want to consult the chair for guidance, if there are some very peculiar elements or unusual circumstances involved. So the language suggests that, where the findings are not clear-cut, the matter can be referred to the full commission for a vote, instead of having an administrative one. And then, any appeal of a zoning administrator decision would go to the planning commission. Our law director has just brought to my attention recently, the language might need to be tweaked to make sure that we are not being permissive when we provide for that option. So if there is a decision made administratively by the administrator that the applicant is not satisfied with and would like to challenge, then we just need to make clear that the next step, the next remedy is to have the matter reheard by planning commission, rather than than going straight to a twenty-five oh six appeal with common pleas. But then when it comes to any planning commission decision, that's what's referred to as an administrative decision within case law, even though we all, we commonly say administrative when we really mean ministerial, which is decisions being made on permits and such by staff only in consideration of the standards. So appeals of a planning commission decision would go to court of common pleas. Other changes that were made to the minor amendment section, particular to the criteria. So criterion D is just embellished a little bit to provide for sewer and water alternatives. The language is written to make sure that there can be utility connections for water and sewer. You can have onsite wastewater treatment, you can have private wells and so forth. It's probably not gonna be, it's gonna be rare if it ever happens at all, but at least the language kind of opens up that possibility for being considered. Presently, the city policy is that we don't allow for septic systems to be installed, new septic systems that is. So per that policy, we wouldn't be able to consider it, but at least the criterion would be written to be open to that should the policy ever change for, we'll say, maybe particular areas of town. Say if there was an annexation in the future or something of that nature. Criterion F was added to ensure that any proposed minor subdivision would not create a new nonconformity or increase in existing nonconformity. I think this was a huge omission on my part during the first round because I think this is extremely important and we were kind of getting at this in our conversation in December. I think it was Mr. Watt that mentioned the example on Bishop. So you had the, the parking area that became or was proposed to become detached from its associated use. So that would in effect be creating a new nonconformity, so that should be a basis for denial of a lot split decision. So criterion F is added for matters such as that or circumstances such as that. Okay, so moving to site plan review for alley development. So feedback that was received, similar or in vain to the minor amendment feedback, striking the right balance between applications that may be approved administratively, meaning ministerially by the staff versus those that should require extra attention. Previously, the language said that the commission would have to review every application. And now we are aligning it with our common practice with minor amendments. So zoning administrator and the chair could administratively approve any site plan that is found to substantially conform to the criteria. Any application which does not conform or needs waivers beyond those that are provided within the language, of course, or otherwise deserves special attention could be referred to the planning commission instead of an administrative decision. So that would be how we would address that particular feedback. Make it evident that alleys may be improved in a way that facilitates the shared nature of the thoroughfare. So the language now states that right of way improvements may include construction of an elevated curb walkway alongside the paved vehicular travel lane or the improvement of the alley passageway to overtly indicate the spaces shared between vehicular, cyclist and pedestrian modes in low speed environment. Further feedback, so the minimum parking requirement was brought up and the general sentiment of the commission was let's get rid of it and let's make sure we get a handle on maximum parking and not have too much of it. Done, okay. The language no longer has.
You should have put poof.
There. Mission accomplished. No longer requires the two off-street spaces, but applicants may still install parking if they wish, but they would be limited to no more than six spaces unless a greater number would be granted as a waiver by the commission. So six maximum, but none required, none mandated.
So is the six regardless of size of parcel?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I felt like that was a reasonable number where you're accommodating spaces for the unit itself, plus a lot of these, of course, are behind pre-existing dwellings. So you often have parking that is detached from the frontage parcel that's serving that frontage parcel, so having a couple of extra spaces in there to me kind of helps offset that demand a bit. But we're not saying it's out of the question, like there may be a certain site context where there's just, there's plenty of area and there's alley frontage and if that's what the applicant wants and it makes sense given the overall layout, then I don't think we want to commit ourselves to a number, but we do want to establish a reasonable threshold where it deserves extra attention. How would extensions or changes to an approved plan be handled? I believe this was Ms. Webster that brought up this concern. So I've added some additional language to clarify how these situations would be handled. So zoning administrator and PC chair could now approve any amendment or extension by evaluating three things, magnitude and scope of any changes, currently applicable code requirements, so essentially looking at the code and developing an understanding of, okay, what has changed, if anything, since the original approval, and then a reevaluation of the review criteria. And then from that, the two could either choose to approve or refer the matter to planning commission. And any request for a change or extension would automatically extend the initial two-year validity by another year. So if an applicant wanted to extend by another year, there's actually a section written in there that says you have to be within six months of your expiration in order to request an extension. You can't just request, oh, I want five years upfront, like you have to basically keep coming back. But a lot of these can just be administrative, like, hey, planning commission chair, zoning administrator, all the codes are the same, we just want additional time, can we have it? And it, it could be a pretty straightforward decision that doesn't necessarily need a hearing and need to be brought forward to the full commission. So I think this would work well in consideration of any changes or extensions. The section kind of just lumps the two together as one type of request. And then any appeals of a zoning administrator or PC chair decision would be intended to go to planning commission as the first administrative remedy and then any appeals of a planning commission decision would go to common pleas from there. Other changes, so the word notwithstanding was used in the original language incorrectly and has now been modified to be used correctly to be absolutely clear that UP uptown zoning district is completely exempt, no site plan review required. Site plan expiration, so this just clarifies that if you have a permit submittal that makes that two-year deadline, but then the permit expires or never reaches issuance, like building reviews can expire, certain, you know, other department reviews can expire, so too does the site plan at that point if the building permit expires following its submittal in time for the two-year deadline, if that makes sense. Building elevations are also now a required component of every submittal. This would not be the primary focus, but I think that's important to have kind of in a similar sense like what we were just talking about with the Chestnut Street development and wanting to know where the sidewalks are gonna be, the connections between the front porch and the, the alley or the street or whatnot. It's important to have that elevation impression presented as a part of the submittal. So that's a summary of all the changes I've made. Did I make the desired changes in accordance with your, your feedback?
It was questions, it was not lawyer.
Yeah, but I want to clarify, I want to make, in our last, in our last meeting, the issue of alleys and streets came up. I want, I want to echo what Zach has said. They are forms, they are distinct forms of thoroughfare. The Ohio Revised Code has rules of construction which are commonly accepted. They can summarize, be summarized as words and phrases are typically intended to be used by their common meaning. I think most people would agree that an alley is not a street, they are a different form of, of, for use of transportation. Then you have specific over general. An alley is specific, is a more specific subsection or subsect. In addition, there are multiple definitions in Oxford's code on what an alley is distinct and separate from a street. By way of comparison, if you were to look into the Ohio Revised Code and the definition of person, you would find a myriad of definitions. They're different because they're tailored from the specific set of statutes. So that's an explanation on why you may not see a consistent definition of alley within a code, the entirety of the code. But the specific common meaning of alley clearly is intended in both the Ohio Revised Code and with an Oxford's code that have a different meaning. I, I trust that that would move out that disbursement of the discussion.
Well, it was, to me, it was just a matter then about property rights, you know, because key to subdivision is the idea that you have access to a public right of way, you know, that's we don't allow wildcat, you know, subdivision. So that was, to me, was less about the distinction, there are different forms of the roadway hierarchy, it's just a question of do you essentially have a right to subdivide if you have frontage on a roadway and does an alley constitute roadway? And from the subdivision purpose, it would seem like it provides the public access that would, I, I just wanted to avoid us, but, but it, from talking to, I mean, I think it's, it's a kind, it sounds like it may be a moot point in, in our context. I mean, it may be more a conceptual discussion, but in this context, it's, I just want to make sure we weren't like depriving people of the, of, of the total right to develop their property, which was a risky thing.
Like that conversation can only occur with a recognition of distinction.
Yeah.
Well, and, and so one thing I think that, and not saying the city as far as staff or anything, just Oxford as an ecosystem, we've failed over the years is people say, well, a lot only has to be X number of square feet, I can do this. So in unemployment, you have to be able and available, you have to meet both criteria. So like, it's, it's almost like mom and dad both have to agree and that's one thing I think a lot of people in this town have failed to understand is there may be three criteria to do something and they're like, well, a lot only has to be five thousand square feet, so I can do this, but they've, they've conveniently not read the other two. So I think that's what our law director and, and Mr. Moore are saying is, is you have the right to develop and you have the right to split your lot, but it also has to meet these three or four other conditions. So I, I think the clarity there helps because, and I, and I do appreciate the part about the distinction, the distinction of uptown versus mile square versus city proper because outside of the mile square, I can't think of any alleys. And then there are some, we were talking about the difference, I mean, there are some in uptown where, I mean, you and I could hold hands and touch both walls and then there's some down on Walnut where we could get the whole commission and so they, there are very different, you know, so I think that, that allows us a little bit of latitude is, you know, some, and I'm just picking Walnut, but let's say, you know, off of Elm, which is not in the uptown district, well, it might have been built a hundred years later and the alley could be twice as wide as, you know, something off park, off the park. So I think that's, that's really good. I do have one question for you, Mr. Moore. Absolutely love that the zoning administrator and I get to hang out a lot more, love that. Ms. Rosenberg pinch hits for me because I kind of have this travel thing. I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure. We don't have to write in our ordinance, chair or zoning administrator or designee, that is covered by like our bylaws in, you know, if I'm out of town and, you know, Ms. Rosenberg can pinch it for me and if Mr. Perry's out of town, you can, like that's addressed elsewhere, we don't have to.
Well, I think per the definition of zoning administrator, we're covered because that can be any series of individuals.
But in our bylaws, in my absence, Ms. Rosenberg.
Yeah, in terms of, yeah, I think you're correct. Yeah, do you want to?
That's how I saw it, I just wanted to make sure.
We have zoning administrator, designee in other places in the code and then the bylaws have planning commission chair and vice chair, you know, that's always the second line of authority if needed.
Okay.
And I think the actual definition of zoning administrator can mean designees.
Yes.
Think the word designee appears.
Because, because in our structure, it allows for the vice chair to serve as the chair.
That's the nature of, of the chair position.
Because they like to text us, like who's available?
We've got a pretty strong precedent for doing that as well.
I know, I just, there, there's more being included in the ministerial approvals, so I wanted to make sure that, you know, if we do something that someone's not like, oh, you can't do that now, Ms. Rosenberg signed that. Vice chair can.
Yeah, I would assume vice chair can.
It fluctuates between the two of us, but I do.
Can I just say thank you for all the work you guys put into this and how well you matched our hodgepodge of suggestions?
So while they confer, are we, I mean, did we ever close public hearing on this?
Funny enough, I don't think we did.
So move, would we close public hearing on PC whatever?
All right, so we have a motion to close public hearing because seven of us missed that. Uh, PC twenty-two forty-four nineteen.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Continuing our out of public hearing.
And I know we do do things differently, we, we're discussing an hour and a move, so let's continue, keep discussing.
For the record, there is no public to give the opportunity to speak on things.
I was about to say that.
Your staff, unless you'd like to speak as a citizen.
I've been devoted from me to be a public, so I'll. I don't have a problem.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I would echo the thanks. I, you know, we haven't done a lot of code writing, but you know, you guys showed your, the attention to detail. I feel like it addresses all the things, it's really complex. I don't think I a hundred percent understand all of it, but I have a lot of trust there. And I think the, the concerns that I heard echoed from, from the, the key stakeholders, I feel like you addressed a lot of it, like, I know, yeah, so I think you heard us. The, the one thing I was a little bit still hung up on and I, but I don't think it's a problem, is I think there was some worry from the developers that the city engineer will just have like power to say no to the development. But it seems like the language is pretty, has to be about the infrastructure provision and it's, so it's not, it's, you know, but I feel like I, I, I think this can open up the door to the development, I think it has a lot of safeguards.
We want to make the, the current, the process that has, has been used, we want to make it more predictable.
Yeah.
For the ones that have been using it, while still recognizing that this, the city organization as a whole has had challenges and will continue to have challenges if this is not properly addressed. And so there's going to be other codes that will be brought forward to council that are outside of zoning. Zoning is just one part of this. So there'll be fire code and there'll be some specifications for the city engineer that'll be all brought to city council at the same time.
But I also think that this is going to be a little bit of a pilot, which is we may find it's detail oriented, so that make the process, things may merge and we have the chance to fix that. If, if like this language could be imported directly into our new code, but you may find that, oh, this didn't exactly work like we thought and in a year's time, we could learn from that. So, yeah, thank you.
I just, so I, I also agree, it's really awesome work and really, really great. But the one thing that I kind of have a problem with is that, that up to six parking spots. I, you know, and I'm just coming from this place of beginning to, you know, learn what it's like in the alleys and there are some areas that are just like a gazillion parking spaces. So I just, for, we're talking about single family development, I don't know why we would allow six whole spaces. I mean, you guys tell me, like, because we don't really want to encourage parking.
And we don't permit commercial parking.
I think that includes our three though.
Six.
Yeah, so that would be two per.
I'm okay with two, I'm okay with three, I'm just not okay with six.
So some of the R three areas allow three family development and so probably some of the ones that you're seeing are ones that have been developed forty, fifty years ago.
Yeah, no, I know, but it's like.
That have a string of cars along the alley, you know, ten, twenty, thirty cars and so I think Zach's approach to this has been six would be unusual, but it still could be proposed at some point. And we don't, you know, if, if the threshold is too low, so this would be over and above what would be required at all, but it would still allow a developer to provide a service to the users or the tenants of their property. But it would still allow a developer to provide a service to the users or the tenants of their property.
Which would might include the, the street, you know, the, the, the property that's on the street, right?
No, 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 it would be all in the alley.
No, I'm saying that it would, could service the entire lot.
It could service the frontage unit, yes.
So, I mean, it just, you know, it creates more runoff. I don't know. I like, I just, I don't know what other people think. That's my position. It's a lot of parking.
I'm just curious how you arrived at six.
Three units.
I think, what I was thinking was, so, a single family permits up to four individuals. So if a builder wanted to have a parking space for each of those individuals, plus a couple extra to service a frontage unit, to me, it felt like six was a, a good number to arrive at as a, as a threshold. And then also, kinda to Sam's point, so a three-family dwelling, um, in like an R3 MS zoned area would require six spaces anyways, two per unit. Even though it would be permitted for up to 12 individuals.
But it might be changed in the new, the zoning revision.
It might change.
Well, I'd, I'd be really curious to see if we see some development. Like, I feel like, 'cause I can imagine thinking you have like the little house and then surrounded by some part, and 'cause there's, there is an economy, even though it's not a permitted use, people are gonna charge, getting a charge for that service. And so...
That's crazy. Nobody mentioned that last month.
So, so I do, like, I guess, I, I don't know what the right number is, but I'd like to see in the next year what gets developed. And if we start seeing that the uses become kind of parking dominated, then I think we need a lower... It may be that the residential, I think the, the thing in our economy is as much as parking can generate money, if people can redevelop these things and charge rents, I think it will make the parking go away, you know? 'Cause I think the parking is just a less valuable use of, of the space. But I think if we start to see that people know there's an economy that justifies big parking lots, I mean, sixes, but in an alley, sixes, then I think maybe we want to look at a different parking maximum.
So it's easier to turn a no into a yes than a yes into a no. So if we allow six and we're like, wow, this is the Wild West. If we go to four, all those sixes are grandfathered in. Would it make sense? Because I, I also agree of, you know, finding that threshold, because we, we did that at HAPC. We found we were constantly having people come and ask for an additional year. We changed to give the auto year in an effort to not have procedure questions. So would it make sense to Ms. Webster's point, uh, to take it to four? And then if we notice there's a ton of requests for five and six, and, and we're basically having that conversation just to allow it? Or to your point, and I know you, you and I don't like the ratios of like, oh, two per times this and, you know, people have to get, you know, uh, you know, decoder ring to figure out how many spots. But would it make more sense to say even to five? Uh, because that's why I had asked the size of the lot. Because to Dr. Porthridge's point in my snark last month is, on that one parcel, I have a garage and I can provide parking and I can literally pave the rest of it. Uh, it had to do with the, um, the right of ways and, and setbacks. So, does it make sense to do four?
I mean, we'll, we'll never know what the right number is. I just feel like one of the problems with the existing alleyways is there's too much parking, for whatever reason, you know? And it, it's unsightly and, you know, I think we don't want to encourage parking, but we know that parking is a huge reality. So I just wanted to raise it.
I second. I think four is a reasonable number.
I like the number four.
I'm fine with it being lowered to four, because it, it doesn't preclude more. It, it just might be context dependent and the planning commission would still have the ability to, you know, approve five or six.
Well, if I understand correctly, the zoning administrator and the chair can approve the fifth one, because, yeah, it's, it makes sense.
We could not, because that would be a waiver. And in order to approve a waiver, it would have to come to the commission.
I just, I don't think, like, I, I don't, if, if we're talking about parking spaces to serve the front lot, then that's an econ, I mean, that's a second, that's like, that's, yeah. Let's just go with four and see if anybody complains about it.
Staff is okay with that? I see some head nodding.
It's easier to turn four into six than six into four.
It's, I think that, uh, Dr. Porthridge is right. It, you know, the, the economy here is heads and beds, you know? And so it's not, this is not serving affordable housing or job creation. Maybe ancillary, but it's very disconnected, you know? So, um, having, you know, the demand is, is not for cars necessarily to be a supporting use. Unless there's some very special situation with a certain market related to a fraternity or something where it's, okay, we gotta have this for the staffing or the advisor or something like that on this nearby building. Uh, other than that, I think it's going to be primarily for, you know, bedrooms.
And whatever we do, it doesn't have to be forever, 'cause we're going to be overhauling the whole code, code, code in a year. So if we see tweaks necessary, we'll have another bite at the apple, I think, with this.
And, and that was my only thought is, uh, a, a smaller number can become larger easier than a larger number becomes small. Because then what happens is, the, um, uh, the inspector's like, oh, is this a six or a four? Or, you know, like, they have to think about it. Whereas if things get more permissive later on, maybe the four is locked out. All right, so I, I, I think we're on the same page. I will accept in a, a record, yeah, I will accept a mo, what?
A motion to approve.
Well, I, I got a couple.
Oh, okay, I was...
Are you just doing the pardon? Or are you doing the whole thing?
I thought we were gonna do the whole thing with the suggested...
I, I have a couple things I have to bring up.
Okay.
So on page 37 and page 130, the procedure that talks about if the zoning administrator, whether or without the planning commission chair denies a request, there's an opportunity to go to planning commission. In both sections, 603A and the other one was an F, the, the were reheard by the planning commission is in there. I think that's misleading. It needs to be, that the matter shall be heard by the whole planning commission. Because rehearing implies that there's already been some other...
Yeah. And, and just for, it's page 37, packet 110.
Okay. And then I've got page 130 there. It's like personally identical language. So basically in the context, we process it. If I get it denied to the admin level, like, if it goes to the planning commission, if I'm denied there, then my 25 or 60 would go right to you.
Okay.
It's a semantics thing. The other thing is more substantive, uh, not a clarification, which is on the same page 37, in D, uh, in cases of minor subdivision review, it says a majority vote that the, uh, a majority vote of the commission is required in order to approve or deny a minor subdivision request. There's another section in here, okay, on page 127, that says a quorum of at least four members required in order for submitted site plan to be considered following a public hearing, a majority vote of the members present. I would prefer that that be consistent.
I would prefer it is not there, because we need to have quorum to function as business, so it's redundant.
Well, then, but, well, maybe, maybe not. Because then, then you get into the question of, if you have the quorum, is it the majority vote of the quorum or is it the majority vote of the planning commission? Because if it's a majority vote of the quorum, it's two votes.
Well, it's three. If you have four, it's three votes.
Well, but if you've got three as your quorum, then it's two votes.
No, we have seven, so you would have to have four.
I'm sorry, bad math.
So, so we have to have four to function.
Correct.
And majority...
Would be three.
Would be three, but majority of, so...
It says of the members present, so wouldn't that be with respect to...
But see, that's redundant, because majority rules on any business matter by Robert's rules.
So it doesn't need to be specified then?
So, so when you specify, we would only have to specify if you want four votes. So if four people show up and you want a majority of the commission, you need all four people to vote. It's not the majority...
We don't want to do that.
And that would require unanimous vote of, of, of the quorum.
So if we strike any reference to, to, uh, the quorum number of members present, it just defaults to Robert's rules. We need four to function, to do business, and then three is the majority. It's always, it's always 50% plus one to win and to establish quorum.
I, I think it would be, you may not always be the chair.
Touche.
And I think that having it written provides clarity and removes any ambiguity. It's a rhetorical document.
So what, would you like, yeah, so what?
Yeah, what's he gonna say?
So my proposal then would be, uh, that, uh, I think at that point that I would go to the majority vote of the quorum.
Uh, so your, your page, uh...
It'll be on the page, my page 127.
B2.
Yeah, that's the more thorough description.
And then a majority vote of the member present.
So that's one proposed amendment. The other proposed amendment is the parking...
To remove the, the, literally RE hyphen rehearing.
No, that's a great catch.
So then the second amendment is to, just where it says rehearing to just substitute with hearing.
Yep.
In those locations. We have a third one that's about adjusting the maximum parking from six to four.
Question on that, to go back to the parking. Are we able to tie that to, um, say, the number of units, right? So that if the max is, you know, two per, you know, if it's a single unit on a property versus in, you know, if it's an R3 and three units, then the max would be four? Is that something that we could do?
We've always tied it to zoning, because they have the right to...
We haven't had maxes a lot, you know? Unless we, we have minimums, and then they're set to...
A lot of times we waive the minimums, especially in commercial. We're like, no, less parking is good.
I guess, I, you know, I'm sure there's a...
I don't know yet how the zoning is gonna play out, because we're amending the code before we amend the code.
Yeah.
So I, I'd almost rather be silent on that right now. I, I kinda was thinking the same thing. You know, what, what other kind of metric can be tied to it to minimize the parking as much as possible? But, um, if we knew for sure what types of buildings we're gonna be in, what zones, then that would make more sense. But it may not make sense a year from now. So, um, I would lean toward, um, just the per lot max of four. But, um, it's like you were saying earlier, it, it's easier to, to increase it than it is to decrease it. So, um, you know, if you want to limit to two, then that would be more straightforward and then we could increase it if there's complaints. But, um, we, we've normally just seen two. But I could foresee if there's, if there is a larger lot, which there's not really any, we could see more than that. But the typical alley lot is fairly over the threshold for being able to be developed and it's a backyard. It's probably just gonna be one or two or none, so...
So I know this is more contract language, but I, I think it gets to your point about the reheard. So on Dr. Porthridge's amendment to, to remove the reheard from those, could we put a condition, uh, I call it the cleanup condition, that if there's another reheard and it is clear that like, the zoning administrator and the chair review, and then it can be heard? Like, if there's another reheard that we missed in here, that staff and the law director can just...
I think those are the only two places where there's appeal right.
Okay.
But I, but yeah, you can say anywhere, anywhere there's an appeal right that exists.
And it's inconsistent. I mean, the intent is clear. So I think if, you know, there's a fourth or a third one somewhere that we may be missed, I, I don't think that's something that we have to vote on.
No, and, and I mean, I, again, like, I think there's, council still needs to hear this in two readings. So if there's other cleanup between now and then...
You've got three leaks.
It was dense to get through.
Yeah, there's a lot in there.
Zach and Sam did a really nice job there. And so that was all, that was a slog.
Environmental commission was very happy with the printed packets.
Yeah, I, I mean, fundamentally, if something wasn't corrected, there's a typo, a script error, whatever, it's gonna come back, the council is gonna fix it.
All right, so, uh, just kind of what I'm hearing, did you actually make a motion?
No.
Yeah, so I moved, did we make those three amendments? I move, do we need to vote on the amendments first and then the whole thing?
You can make a motion, y, your motion can include changes.
That's what I'm saying. I move approval subject to the following modifications. A, reheard, B, substitute into heard. Two was...
Majority in the, uh, more...
Uh, I think, I think the exact wording, you actually hit it, was, uh, to hit, uh, page 127 in the packet 118, the wording in, uh, B2 was, that was the...
And the third is that the parking maximum be four instead of six. That was my motion.
So I have a motion with those three changes?
Second.
All right, Mr. Bracken with the second. I have a motion and a second, Mr. Moore.
All right. Uh, let's mix it up here. I'll start with Mr. Bracken.
Yes.
Mr. Porthridge?
Yes.
Mr. Cruuth?
Yes.
Ms. Webster?
Yes.
Max Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes. All right, we're getting there. All right, so, uh, we will now, uh...
Make a motion to pull it off the table?
Actually, yes. So, uh, as a formality, when, um, I personally heard, and I think all four recording devices heard, uh, Dr. Porthridge make a motion to take, uh, 19 off the table. I think it was right around the time he, we adjourned to public hearing. I, I, you know, you've got it four times, I'm sure. So, uh, I will entertain a motion to remove, uh, PC 2024-20, zoning tax amendment to increase allowable floor area for retail from 10,000 to 20,000. Uh, if anyone would like to make a motion to take off the table. I have a motion from Dr. Porthridge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ooh.
That was like stereo sound. All right, so, uh, all those in favor of removing from the table?
Wait, can I just ask a question? We're just doing this, why are we doing this?
Because we have to take it off the table.
We have to.
But we don't have to take it off the table.
I would prefer to do that, and I know he would.
Just, just how come? Like, I'm just curious.
Well, we could, we could leave it on the table and then it effectively kind of expires, right? So, or we can take it off the table to act on it, and that can be to approve it or to deny it.
Right. And I just don't know where this is coming from.
Well, it's so...
Because it was tabled last month.
Last meeting, uh, it was not moved forward to council. So then it was tabled, and so if, if you want to go home tonight, you just leave it on the table.
Well, hypothetically.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care.
And then next meeting, we can think about taking it off the table again.
Where we will get up in the next meeting, so...
If you would like to, or you can leave it on the table indefinitely and it will just go away.
Actually, it will never go away, because I will have to address it every meeting under old business before we get to new business, because it is an agenda item tabled to the next one.
That would be the ideal method, yes.
I think this can be...
You hate my parley, bro.
I'm, 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 I'd be to act on it tonight, that's why, you know, but, but I think that we can resolve this conversation. I think there's a way to resolve this conversation quickly, which is like, it's late, but I think we could do it quickly.
Agreed.
But I would think so.
So I, as a, as a point of clarification, were you asking if, why, or how procedurally? Or, hey, it's late and I want to go home, why are we doing this?
Yeah, so, I mean, I, it seems like it's maybe kind of a simple thing to act on it, but if everybody wants to go home, I'm cool. I would really like to act on this thing. I personally do not want this to be...
So procedurally, we cannot talk about it unless it comes off the table. So that's, that's where that's just coming from.
Okay, I got it. I got it.
Yeah. All right, so I have a motion and a second, uh, to remove it from the table. And, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, seeing none. Now, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
So moved.
Dr. Porthridge with the motion?
Second.
Second, Bracken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no opposition. Mr. Perry, you get to close this out tonight.
All right, thank you. Uh, so Mr. Kropkebaker and I have, have talked a few times over the past few months about this. This was originally inspired by, uh, a potential redevelopment of the former bookstore property, 110 East High Street. Through the process, we looked at another potential property as well. There's a requirement, if you remember from the last meeting, uh, or if any of the public is still listening, uh, somewhere, there's a threshold for, um, a, a square footage limit on a single tenant, uh, in the uptown zoning district that, uh, if it's over 10,000 square feet, uh, it cannot be approved administratively. It has to go to planning commission and council. So for a, for the former bookstore property, um, that property is over 10,000 square feet. And so, and also for another one, the old funeral home, uh, 101 West Church Street, another, uh, large property that could potentially have a single tenant. Uh, and as you know, around uptown, we do have, um, properties that don't, that are designed and developed not always with a, a, a ground floor tenant in mind, and that's unfortunate. And so what we would like to do is, uh, increase the possibility that a ground floor tenant, uh, would be... And so what we would like to do is, uh, increase the possibility that a ground floor tenant, uh, would be designed and built and go into a building, um, at the same time as the, as the upper floors. Uh, and so, uh, last meeting, uh, there was, there was, uh, some staff comments shared, uh, uh, through the process and the commission had some comments as well about, um, what are some examples of potential retailers that, that might possibly come into, uh, a single tenant space? Uh, and so Seth did some, some looking, um, and there's a Target store, uh, in the University of Cincinnati area, kind of an urban Target concept. Uh, not a real common thing with retailers, but it happens to be kind of in that, uh, range between the ten and twenty thousand square foot. Uh, there's, uh, the Walgreens building in town, which has been vacant, uh, is right around fifteen thousand square feet, just for, not necessarily for Walgreens, but just as a concept of, uh, space and size. Gives you a little bit of a reference point for a business that is a well-known, uh, brand name. There was also concern from, uh, the fire chief about, uh, usage of property from a, a high demand for public services, you know, a bar or restaurant type of, uh, facility. So in other words, if, if one thing goes in, um, that if the code is amended to assist, uh, something that's not a bar or a restaurant, and then, uh, that business closes and then now the door is kind of open for something else, uh, that has more demand on public services. And I think the staff response was, uh, there are other, uh, it's not, zoning cannot necessarily solve everything. And I think the, uh, the response that we had was, right now it seems like the greater good is to activate ground floor spaces, um, during the daytime, uh, and potentially the nighttime, but, uh, during, uh, times where there's a, there's kind of a negative effect that vacancy has on the, the viability and the, um, of a, of an urban and a downtown or uptown area. So, um, that's more of the historical problem that we've had in recent years. Uh, not to say that the demand for public services from bars and restaurants that are late at night, um, for, uh, various activities that, um, generate calls for service, not that that is not an issue, uh, because it definitely is. Um, but we felt like that was, uh, um, a lesser issue than, uh, vacancy, especially at, in, in one particular property, uh, but could be others potentially in the future, um, that it, it's a very key property. And there are others that if they're sitting vacant for a long time, uh, that definitely has a negative effect on, uh, the economic development. So, um, I'm sure Seth could answer more questions, but I think I'm trying to kind of channel his, his comments as well. So hopefully that helps. Um, we are hearing some from, uh, the developer, not necessarily on this topic. So I don't know that this will have a, a real outcome that we would see, but at least might potentially open the door. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Mr. Perry?
For Mr. Kropenbaker?
All right, Mr. Kropenbaker, you wanna join us in the hot seat? We'll let you have your podium time.
Yeah, for, for delaying bedtime, my own included. Um, yeah, I think, yeah, Sam hit kind of, uh, most of the key points. There is an emerging trend in, um, in retail of these kind of many Targets, Target marketplaces, stores of the like, uh, that have kind of limited selection, really focusing on things like home goods, electronics, limited grocery, uh, targeted, um, specifically around college towns and campuses. Those properties that, that Target's developing are in that range of really in that fifteen thousand to eighteen thousand square feet. Um, so this particular property would kind of fall in line with that. Would it become a, a Target market? I certainly can't guarantee that, but, you know, um, this provision or this change, this amendment rather would, and I open the, potentially open the door for that. Sam also referenced, you know, some research done on other properties. Um, you know, this specific property at fourteen thousand nine hundred eighty-five, uh, square feet. Uh, Walgreens, as he mentioned, slightly smaller, fourteen thousand seven sixty-one. Another reference point, Buffalo Wild Wings is, uh, six thousand, uh, three hundred and thirty-six square feet. So just kind of giving you a sense of, of size and what we're talking about here. So, um, do you think that, uh, kind of the, the impetus, the spirit of, for this amendment is to kind of open the doors and, and, you know, kind of buy right development, uh, try to activate, as Sam mentioned, and facilitate the, uh, meaningful development in, uh, in our community? Again, trying to, uh, help us carve out our, our own destiny and push forward projects that we want. So hopefully that follows my with that. Thanks.
All right. I do have a question for you. Sorry. Um, and, and this is not to isolate a business, but I, um, I, when I, I, I was fascinated by, uh, B dubs, I didn't realize, um, it was six thousand. Uh, for context, um, do you know generally ballpark how big things like Brick Street or, um, the new Carolyn Harris? Uh, I, uh, cause I know the restaurant in there is rather large.
So I've got some number, like Carolyn Harrison at like forty-five hundred square feet. I'm not entirely clear if that includes both sides or not. Forty-five seem rather large to me. Um, you know, I think that B dubs number likely includes back of the house as well. So kind of that entire square, if you will, you kind of walk in and everything as it connects to the home's hotel.
Is this, uh, this just occurred to me, like, uh, Brick Street has two stories, um, like Kona, Bella has two stories. When we're talking, is it, is it, um, cause like if you think of residential, you have above grade, uh, square footage and below. So, you know, you might have a fully furnished basement, but, you know, thank God the accessory only counts the top. Um, is this twenty thousand total?
It's on any given floor.
Any given, yeah.
So it could be twenty and twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if, if the single tenant, uh, was going to exceed, um, twenty thousand under this code amendment, they would, on any given floor, would need a conditional use.
So, so they could have... Okay, so they could have, they could have ten and ten and be fine, but if they had twelve and twelve, they, that's twenty-four.
Under the, under the proposed code, they would need a conditional use.
Okay.
I would boomerang, you know, back to a comment Dr. Prithrich made regarding, um, you know, the highest return on investment, uh, in property in town. And I think after you get off the first floor, beds, uh, are gonna get you the, you know, kind of the greatest return on your investment. So the likelihood of multi-floor, commercial retail development seems lower. Um, again, you know, no guarantees on that, but, um, developing, you know, second, third floors as residential property versus commercial property likely sees the, uh, the greater return for an investor.
Yeah, and most of the ones we have, Skippers, Kona, those, those were that way before.
Out of the box, yeah.
But you're right, the new ones, I can't think of a single one that's gone to the second floor.
To, to put it a different way, I would say that we've talked, we've thought about, um, allowing residential on the ground floor because of the high number of vacancy that we have. If that gives you an idea of the concern that we have.
We were concerned about the windows in the new bookstore building. Um, so my other question for you, um, and I don't remember, I think Dr. Prithrich, I know a couple of us had thought of this, uh, under conditional use. So one of the safeguards, um, we had talked about is, so right now, uh, gas stations, churches, uh, there's, there's a bunch of things, hotels, they're conditional use, whether it's five beds or four hundred beds. Does it make sense to put a safeguard in, again, when we zone something general business outside of, you know, conditional use? Uh, it's by right, but could we say that, um, this is by right except for, you know, maybe, um, and I know we had talked about alcohol?
I have a solution for, I have a targeted solution. I mean, not to punt, but, but the question is, if, if, yes or no, your primary thought is, is a national retailer. Is that really what it's about?
Correct.
Okay, so I have a solution that...
Where do we get the discussion? He's got our answer.
I've got a solution.
Okay. Um, cause I, I know that, that's a, I think we're trying to give the tools to staff and, and folks, but also, um, mitigate potential problems and also from a confidence standpoint. I know even when some of the stuff is extremely straightforward, we still have people who are not happy, so. Okay, so that's all I have to, to think of right now. Uh, any questions from Mr. Kropenbaker or Mr. Perry? All right, seeing none.
Move, close, we move to a public hearing.
I have a motion to adjourn from public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ooh, Cruuth with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, we are out.
So do you permit me what I think is the surgical solution?
Yep.
Um, because I am torn on this. One, because I sympathize with the desire, you know, and I, I, I see what you're trying to do from an economic development point of view. It would be super awesome to have a Target marketplace and I certainly don't wanna stand in the way of that. Um, and if we can do something to support that, great. I would also say that I think the likelihood of those retailers coming to Oxford is low, you know? And what I've learned from Oxford is that the, the likelihood of somebody else using this for reasons like a mega bar are higher. So I, so to me, I'm hesitant to open the door just by right to everything to twenty thousand square feet because I just think the risks outweigh the possible gains. But, but, so I could just say no. But what if, what we, what our current code currently does is break into retail services, a bunch of things that are explicated. It, then it says professional services that are explicated. But could we carve out a separate category for national retail services not to exceed twenty thousand square feet? And this is a nomenclature thing. But currently in our code, if you look at the way that it's written, the things that are permitted is A, any number of residential uses in a certain combination. B, retail services not to include ten thousand square feet, and it lists those things. And then C, it says professional and personal services. Could we have a new C that basically breaks up the national retail services? Everything else remains ten. But new language C would say national retail services not to exclude twenty thousand square feet on any area. So if a national retailer wants to come in, and I don't know if that's a sufficient definition or whether we need to define it elsewhere in the code, if Target wants to come in, they could have the by right, you know, because they are in that one category of thing that we're willing to permit up to twenty thousand square feet. I would also say I don't think that Target would blanch at the idea of a conditional use process. I mean, the conditional use process is already there and if, if Target were like, oh, I would really wanna be in Oxford, but we'd have to go through a conditional use, I don't really think that's a problem. But I, I wanna support Seth's efforts, so I don't wanna just do this. But I, but I also do not wanna open up, I mean, who, who owns the property you're talking about? But Benji Vetter Bush, who is in a partner with the operator of the biggest bar, and I can imagine a twenty thousand square foot bar. So, and, and, and so wait, so I guess the question is, could we not just have a separate category of national retail services for which we permit them up to twenty thousand square feet? And it's by right, but only for that narrow category of things, rather than exclude. It's just permissive, but is, that's, that's...
I would like to hear what the economic development director has to say about that.
So now I have to recognize him in not public hearing. Fine, Mr. Kropenbaker?
I think it sounds like an elegant solution.
Uh, I don't, not fully clear. I'd kind of defer to the, the, the wisdom of our community development department law director on, you know, what that language would look like, if that is, uh, kind of permissible, but certainly...
But do you think that that would be, do you think that that would harm? You're trying to activate these buildings. You're trying to get people in. Do you think...
I think it's a good, uh, I think it's a good measure that helps protect against that kind of, the worst possible world, which I think is a fair, fair stance to take.
So I fully support Dr. Prithrich, but two potential holes is, uh, B dubs is a national retailer.
Right.
Uh, so that does not solve that.
No, I don't think they, I mean, they're a food service.
Yeah, they would be covered under the food, food category in that zoning code.
So they would be only up to tap house on profit, yeah.
But the, the, so, well, I guess that would be three things. So if you think about places like Lowe's, the original Lowe's and the original Walmart, they were stores like Uptown. So by the national, I think from, uh, economic development, look at the local brands versus the chains. And I mean, yes, we've got a ton of national chains, you know, of College Corner Pike, but, um, in a small town, I, I, and again, I agree with you, I just, the national delineation, I think, I think some people in this town will say, oh, big corporations getting preference. And we have some, like, like Wildberry and Schneider Electric and some of those, you know, so again, I, I...
We made an indoor golf course go through a conditional use process and they did.
No, 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 I agree.
It wasn't so much of a burden that our local person went through what is, you know, so I guess...
It's equal treatment under the law. You're a national company, you can just come in and have twenty grand. Oh, hey, you wanna start, uh, thread up?
No, and, and I'm not, I guess what I'm saying is that I have two choices. At ten PM is I just say, no one says thing. Cause I don't think, I think if, I don't really...
Well, let me interject there. We're, we're here to serve the public. So, but the other, the other, uh, part that I have on, on that is, could we tie it to something? If the big deal breaker is, you know, the mega bar, could we say, uh, delineate it, you know, instead of creating a category, could we just say, you know, up to twenty thousand doll, uh, twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand square feet, unless you need a conditional use or liquor license or anything of that nature? Mr. Law Director?
I would not have thought this were the case, but, uh, in the last two years, I became aware of a situation where zoning said, uh, no bars were permitted, but there were liquor licenses available in that area. So what wins? The state liquor license or the local zoning?
Ding ding.
State liquor license. Can't, you couldn't restrict it. So that would be a concern that I would have without knowing if there's any liquor licenses available in a, in a, in an area. If you said specifically no bars, no certain uses, and then focused it in with a general, larger retail component that would contemplate local, large retail as well as national.
I think, just to clarify one thing, this is, not only is it about, you know, that end use, that tenant going through that conditional use process, but it's also about the developer, kind of building to suit, um, you know, as they're developing that first floor and as they, you know, are they actively trying to market and recruit, you know, so when the doors open and they're building to suit to a, a local retailer of twenty thousand square feet or a national flag, whatever it might be. Um, it's kind of twofold, not strictly to, you know, the, the impetus for this was strictly on the end user, but also the developer as they are getting those architectural plans and designs and, you know, how are they developing this property from the ground up?
And I don't disagree with you that if you're building a forty-eight thousand square foot, four-story building, you know, a couple of extra discussions is not...
Yeah, I, I, I mean, to be, I mean, I really, I sympathize with the effort. I, I think that the likelihood of these large retailers is low. I think what this could result is, is a big, dark, unbuilt out twenty thousand square face instead of two unbuilt out ten thousand square foot faces. Um, or it could end up with a twenty thousand square foot bar. So I'm, I'm sympathetic to the narrow target. Like, I guess what I hear from you is you're looking for relatively, you're trying to target it, you know, you're thinking about a relatively targeted thing. So let's make the code be targeted about it. Because I, I definitely am not comfortable with just raising the twenty thousand to a twenty thousand period because I think the dangers are higher. I, I don't think the conditional use is a problem for anybody. It's just not that big of a deal. But if, if this, if we think that the, the conditional use could be the difference between being able to lure a target or not, I'm willing to carve out a national retailer twenty thousand square foot thing because the risks are low and if there's reward, it would be great.
I'm leaning no because I don't think the conditional use is that hard and I do worry about everything that you've mentioned.
Uh, Mr. Perry, I have a question. Is, is there a way that we could strike a middle ground? Uh, and what I'm thinking is right now it's, it's ten. You take it to, uh, you know, and I'm just thinking of contracting standards, like I can do four thousand nine ninety-nine without approval and then I need board for forty-nine ninety-nine or under. Could we set almost a tier where we leave the ten alone, but then zoning administrator in the chair, and we can spell out the criteria, can go up to fifteen, no questions asked, uh, like just, okay, yes, it meets the predetermined or even seventeen because that would hit our target. But then, because I can tell you right now, if it was, you know, the world's largest vape shop, I'm bringing that to the commission because, well, there's also a moratorium, but that's a whole other thing. So I think, I think there's a middle ground where city staff and the chair and vice chair can look at it and if it is a target at seventeen thousand, it's like, well, this was the intent. But, I mean, you've had to put up with me asking questions and I'm not gonna name the retailer there on College Corner Pike. Um, where we had an hour-long discussion before I signed that piece of paper. So, I mean, I think that people also have to understand that when we do administrative approvals, minor amendments, things like that, it's not just like, here's a piece of paper, sign it. I mean, there are discussions that are happening. So procedurally, would there be a way to almost take the minor amendment or, or the things we've just approved elsewhere and find a middle ground? Because I think, I think, uh, both sides have very valid points. And I just think, between the two of us and the two of you, kind of that middle ground where we're not jumping from 10 to 20, and maybe there's some area in the middle? Is that something feasible?
Yeah, yeah, we would need to take some more time on that, and I don't know if, if the commission wants to just kind of end this discussion, or, you know, another middle ground could be. We could withdraw it, because then if you vote no, it goes to council, and then it's, okay, we're not even going to talk about this in the future. Or if you want to table it again, then we can spend some more time on it. In this, in the particular property that inspired this, they're moving a lot slower than what we originally thought. So we thought this process would kind of galvanize their decision in one way or the other, and it really hasn't. So, I don't really sense the urgency, but at the same time, I don't, I know you probably don't want to see this keep showing up on future agendas.
Oh, I have an idea. So, is it possible just to, you know, move forward with this, with this, using the word retail, just retail, and that would preclude bars and restaurants? Because that's really.
I like when he nods.
I think it could, I mean.
Because that's what we want, right?
Because we're not denying the property owner the right to do it, we're denying them the automatic buy right.
And what I'm saying is.
Rather than call it national retail, just call it retail.
I don't like the idea of national retailer, because it's too, it's prejudicial, you know? So what if, you know, in an, in an effort to be, you know, responsive to development possibilities, we say that we will allow retail uses of up to 20,000? You know, without a conditional use?
I agree with that, because then the developer is able to, to target, target.
So, but bars and establishments serving alcohol are currently under retail services.
Right, we'll have to rework that whole code. That's, I'm agreeing with you in principle, but the wording is going to take a while.
No, that's fine. I guess the point is, I'm, I'm fine with, yeah, I'm car, I just.
No, I, I think we all agree, we don't want a 15,000 square foot bar.
Yeah, so bar would be taken out of that category, put into another.
So, earlier when I said B-Dubs, I was thinking bars and restaurants were under retail, so I wasn't incorrect.
No, you were correct.
Okay, yeah, so that's why I use B-Dubs, is because they're a national.
That's what the fire chief's concern is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
So. But then the, if this was an option, the chair and staff talking, then we should decide between which one, if that's an option, which we prefer, defining retail, or, because I'd rather leave it up to.
No, we would legislate it so that it was clear. There would not, not be a need for chair and staff to discuss it at all.
Yeah, I think that's not.
Well, then, then the question would be, do we want it though? Because honestly, I trust that conversation more than.
Oh, I see.
The gaps.
No, I mean, I think in this case, no.
We want, I think this is, yeah, the categories need to be clear.
But the, to categorize it, because if we say no, then they can come to the commission and, and, you know, I mean, then that's a whole question of buy right, well, it's my property and.
Yeah, I don't think discretionary, I don't think you want discretionary approval on, on uses and size. So I guess the question is, is, I mean, it does sound like we're not going to resolve it tonight, but if we put it back on the table.
Yeah, but yeah, based on the feedback, I think we can rewrite it with Ms. Webster's, you know, kind of concept, and, and if you want to have another look at it before.
Because you can change the categories, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the categories of things that we might not want, 10,000 square feet of apparel or jewelry, or book stationery, or drugs and pharmacy, like those categories, I don't, I mind a 20,000 foot flowers, pot of plants, and garden supplies, you know? But, but I do, but I do worry about, you know, 20,000 square, square feet of bars and establishments serving alcohol.
And a number of other things, like vape shops and.
Yeah.
No un, giant unintended consequences that we can't go back.
But I would also say that the investment, if we can do this relatively expeditiously, because again, no offense, I don't really, I, I don't know how much this is really currently the impediment to our redevelopment, and so like, how much time do we want to put into, so I mean, can it be done through a relatively surgical amendment of the code? Like, that's just the question, because if it takes too much time, then it's just like, we're investing time into.
Here, here's a way to, I think, give the best of all worlds. I like Ms. Webster's suggestion. So if we were to make, you know, make a motion to approve, you know, retail only, based on the condition of the change for future, like, make them tied together so that basically if they don't change the definition of retail to remove the things that we're not looking for, it basically dies. So like, we can approve it to be retail pending, or based on the successful approval of legislation ordinance to redefine retail excluding bars, blah, 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 blah.
Are you talking about procedure, or do we just put this back on the table?
Well, what I would suggest is that you put forward a motion to approve the, the proposal. Deny it, because you want proposals to be active, not negative. And then, you've already then given instructions to staff on when they're ready to bring it back to you.
You want us to make a motion to deny it?
No, I want you to make a motion to approve it, and then you deny it, and that closes it out.
Okay, I got you.
There's a logical reason for that, because if you say, I, I make a vote, I make a motion to deny, and everybody says yes, it all, it, it creates a bad record.
No, 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 I was, I, we were on the same page, I was just making sure I heard you correctly.
I just, like, I mean, the only reason I don't agree with that is that then it kind of looks bad going to council.
Yeah, because it's going to go.
I thought you were going to bring it back to them for approval of what you did.
Before.
Yeah, I thought you were bringing it back.
No, this is a recommending body, right?
I thought you wanted.
Let's just table it, so you can, and then it'll go to council one time.
Let's table.
Okay.
I heard a motion to table over here.
Second.
Oh, so, you have a second. However you want to catch that. It was, it was Perth, Perthrich and Webster. All those in fa, well, I don't have to be real on this. All those in favor of putting this back on the table?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
So.
You have a second?
Any of, you have a second or consent, I'm out of here.
Aye.
So like I like to say, as the chair, I can't be late to the meeting.